All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 5:00. I would like to call to order a regular meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. At this time, Ms. Peck, will you please do the roll call?
Ms. Chek?
Here.
John Krieger?
Here.
Kyle Lowe? Here.
Cody Nicolai?
Here.
Jane Grouche?
Here.
Lance Strahl?
Here.
Karen Vandenberg?
Here.
Lee Webster?
Here.
Pat McKee?
Here.
All right. Everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Reading of the mission statement. It is the mission of Wassa School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. Okay. We are on item five, Public and Student Comment. Thank you. Okay. We do have a few folks signed up this evening. And just as a reminder, participants will be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface your comments by stating your name, address, and/or group affiliation if and when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant is limited to three minutes in duration. Clerk Peck will have cards available for you to alert you as to where you are in your time. Speakers shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Speakers do bear the personal risk if anything he or she says during the public comment period is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. And the presiding officer may call for a recess or adjournment to another time if there is a lack of public decorum. And interviews with the orderly conduct of the meeting is to warrant such action. Public comment is limited to 30 minutes per the agenda. We have five people signed up, so I don't think that will be a problem. All right. Our first speaker this evening, Alyssa Froome. Where do we have the...
I don't have the mic.
If you can come up forward here.
So I just want to make sure that you all have seen my notice because I just try to make sure that we are all on the same page level of what's happening. Did you be able to be briefed?
Yes.
Because I brought an extra letter as well.
No, this is your opportunity to present whatever your comments are to the board.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. I'm addressing, making sure that we're all on the same page level so I can either provide everybody a copy today or we can...
We do have copies of...
I'm making sure.
Yeah. Correct.
And then the other one is in regards to her, that yet there's still no receiving a phone call regards to her injury as well.
I wouldn't know what to say to that one. You can call my office and we can discuss that.
Because two weeks ago, I was supposed to receive a phone call from your insurance agent. I've yet to receive that.
Okay.
So...
We can follow up with that.
Because I'd like to get things moving. Time is of the essence. There you go. I got nothing else to say.
Thank you, Ms. Froome. Next on the agenda, we have the next speaker is Carvana Froome?
Kariana.
Kariana?
Well, I'm Alyssa's...
Can you please state your name and address, please? I forgot to have your...
Kariana Froome, just 607 South 22nd Ave. It's regarding my sister and like wondering why just like things haven't been like just handled and fixed with it too and that stuff. But yeah, pretty much just that. But yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Froome. All right. Next, we have Tanya Reel.
Tanya, yep. Just standing here, is that fine?
Sure. You can stand or sit.
My name is Tanya Reely, 22328 Orchid Lane, Wassa, Wisconsin, 5441. Overall, as a taxpayer in the school district, I am happy with the new positive direction of the Wassa Public School System by the board. However, the actions you took at the last board meeting smacked of the lack of transparency and accountability that is reminiscent of the prior school board, and I am disappointed. The board approved a $1 million taxpayer-funded bonus, and it doesn't matter if it's from local, state, or federal sources because it's all taxpayer money. It was hidden in the agenda under line Staff Listening Session Summary. It was explained and voted on the same night with no time for public feedback. So here are some questions and comments I have since I was not allowed to weigh in before the vote. According to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction's 3rd Friday in September enrollment data, from 2019 to 2020, the district dropped 436 students. From 2020 to 21, the district was able to recover only 222 of the lost students, so there was a net loss of 214 students between the two years. I would like some accountability from the school board to tell us taxpayers why those lost students left the school system and why such poor enrollment performance justifies a $1 million taxpayer bonus. On September 22nd, 2021, an allegation of racial and cultural insensitivity was levied against one of the schools in the district. A press release from the school called this incident "a huge mistake that perpetuated stereotypes." I would like the board to explain to me why, if the incident was so egregious. Any of the staff involved, including administrators responsible for that school, deserve any of the $1 million bonus. There was a lot of talk about staff appreciation at the last board meeting. Where is appreciation from the board for parents who had to do the school's job last year when in-person learning was shut down and parents had to effectively homeschool their children? What kind of appreciation bonus will the board approve for those parents? Now, I'd like to share a personal story that is much more subjective but still relevant. My little boy, who is nine-years-old, enjoys serving others. At certain times of the year, he volunteers time on Saturday mornings, sometimes in the freezing cold, to accompany his father on fundraising drives for an organization that raises money for people with special needs. A few months ago, this organization held a dinner in which it recognized the recipients of the donations and handed out the awards. There were many private nonprofit groups who received donations, and they showed up and expressed tremendous gratitude. There was also a substantial list of Wassa Public Schools that received donations. Do you know how many representatives of those schools showed up to express their gratitude? None, zero. It makes one wonder if the public schools even need those donations, if they can't bother to send even one representative to show some appreciation. So when you preach to my family about showing appreciation, you appear as total hypocrites. Even my nine-year-old son can see that. Lastly, if the board felt it necessary to provide a taxpayer-funded bonus to the staff, then it should have been merit-based. Staff members who are on the front lines and who are innovative and doing extra work to help students should get priority in the distribution of bonuses. Which staff members deserve bonuses in the eyes of students and parents, I would like to know. Administrators should not automatically get a bigger award just because their salary base is high, but that is how this bonus is structured. Many of your round here seats on a platform of restoring confidence. This stunt you pulled last month with the $1 million bonus was a step backwards in restoring that confidence. You've proven you can do better. I've seen it. And I will expect better from you going forward. Thank you, and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Charles Berger.
I'll sit down. Charles Berger, 223611 Magnolia Ave, Wassa, Wisconsin, 5441. I met with the board a few meetings ago and asked about the possibility of forming a steering committee to look at maybe, you know, larger sports facilities upgrades in the Wassa School District. And I'm hoping that after the incredible performance that the district came at, we had conference champions in football, cross-country, the students just did a fantastic job, that we maybe, you know, try to talk about that a little bit further. I know that in the referendum questions, after talking with many of the coaches at the Wassa West Football Banquet Dinner afterwards, you know, all the awards were handed out, many of the coaches felt that they didn't have their voices being heard, they didn't have any input on any of the coaches for any of the sports towards those referendum questions. So it was important to them to say, hey, it'd be great if we could get a committee, you could hear our thoughts, our needs, and maybe what we'd like to see. You know, we're looking now at other districts building advanced training facilities. Right now, you know, there was a race to turf in our conference for the last ones with respect to football that doesn't have it. Others are now looking at indoor facilities, they're doing it. You know, one example is Kokona that used to be a 1-8 team, and now they reversed it because they have those abilities to go and work both lacrosse, both soccer, and football indoors. You know, knowing that the rest of the conference and many of the schools, especially in our northern climate, are building this, in the southern climates, they're in shade, you know, in the Texas and Florida area, it just seems that we need to make adjustments to allow our student athletes to be more on par. You know, I'm still wondering if there's a chance that you can discuss among yourselves the formation of a steering committee. I realize that with elections, sometimes board members come and go, but if we could get a steering committee with some of the local community leaders as well as your coaches, it'd be fantastic to get their input and see, you know, about a short and a long-term vision and really get true input. I see this as a benefit not only to, you know, to reduce burden on a taxpayer. I've talked to many business owners saying, would you get behind something like this? They're saying, I'm only CEO for a certain amount of time. I'd love to, but you're not showing me anything. I'm not seeing blueprints of what could be that we could go and give you millions of dollars to. Two, improve community outreach. With companies now being invested, I brought up the fact that just in a simple baseball tournament, just a single grade of like a 10-team brings about $750,000 to the local community. And generally, there's 10, 12, 14, 16. You're talking about a $3 million weekend. So lastly, it offers the students the opportunity to succeed. I see the mission statement on the back wall. And lastly, it offers our teachers, which are our best coaches, I mean, look at, that's who's are coaching the kids. It gives them the ability to coach and train on par with other districts in their competitive areas. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our final speaker, John Mossen.
Good evening, everybody. How we doing?
Good.
You? I'm doing fine, thank you. My name is John Mossens, 803 Steuben Street. I am a educator at Wassa West, and I, for one more month, I am the president of the Wassa Education Association. I am here this evening with positive news. A couple of things, if I can keep them in my memory. First of all, the WEA renewed our membership with WERC for another year, so we're very happy with that. Successfully re-upped our standing with that organization. Again, allowing ourselves to speak for the educators of the Wassa School District, so we're very proud of that. Secondly, we're very proud, and of course, some of you are involved with this, and I would like to toot our horn and toot the district's horn and really thank everybody. Under the leadership of one of our officers, Rob Hughes, 783 food insecure families were able to enjoy a better Thanksgiving with turkeys and hams. I believe over the four or five years that Rob has been leading this charge, $39,000 has been raised by Wassa School District educators and administrators and anybody who's been interested in offering their services to that charge. So thank you for that. Also, I would like to introduce our new president, who will be taking over in January, Ms. Dana Parlier, back there. I can't promise you that you'll never hear again from me, but I can promise you that the new head of the WEA will be Ms. Parlier. Our bylaws dictate that I needed to step down as term limits were in order, so that's our new president, and I am very, very sure that Dana will do a great job. I'm not worried at all. She's been doing a great job as one of our officers for the last couple of years. And with that, I would like to wish everybody at this time in this room, happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and wish you all the best of luck with some very tough decisions that you have coming up, and thank you for everything. So, take care.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
President Mickey, it's nothing streaming, by the way. I'm getting texts from people. It's not going out on YouTube.
Thank you for that. Okay. Next on the agenda, we will have approval of the consent agenda, which includes additional staff, replacement staff, increases and decreases of contracts, contract renewals and non-renewals, leaves of absence, resignations, terminations, voluntary retirements, minutes from the regular session of November 8th, 2021, payment of bills in the budget status and investment report, and also donations to the district from the following groups and/or individuals: Middle Wisconsin Chefs Association, Associated Bank, Cloverbelt Credit Union, People State Bank, Anonymous Donor, Incredible Bank, Thrivant, Palitos Pizza, ULR, Friends of Riverview Elementary School, Laura Lee Gorski, GPM Southeast, Highland Community Church, Wassa East Gridiron Club, Kerry Zaramski, Roxanne Zaramski, Corey Sillers, Wisconsin Woodchucks, and I would also like to add Rob Hughes and all of those that worked on that particular effort again over Thanksgiving. So I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda with extreme gratitude for all of those folks and their donations to the district.
Sub move.
Second.
All right. First and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda, approve the 2020-2021 audit report. This is an action item, and we have our old friend Chuck Krieger with us again.
He saved me the introduction. Who's Chuck?
I take it the old meant old friend, not old as in...
Yeah. As in years you've been visiting us.
Great. Well, thank you for having me here again tonight. I won't take up a lot of your time.
Be careful of that.
Okay. First, I'm assuming everybody has access to the longer of the two reports that we issue, the independent financial, independent auditor's report and financial statement. So just spend a few time, a few minutes going over a couple of parts of it. I'm going to flip to page three, which is the independent auditor's report. And when I refer to page numbers, it will be in my hard copy, it might be a few pages off in your PDF if that's what you're looking at. So, independent auditor's report, nothing new here. It's the same kind of setup it's been for a few years. States what the report is, states what your responsibility is as management, what our responsibility is, and then at the top of page four, it gives our opinions. It comments on some additional matters, because we do a single audit for you. That's an audit required when you get over $750,000 of federal aid. Okay? So you're well in excess of that, but there's some reference to that and government auditing standards. Just a little heads up, this report will be changing in the future. Another year or two, they're gonna, as they always do, they add some footage, they take some away. They, you know, it's maybe not clear what the total responsibility is, so there's going to be some changes on that coming down the road, but for now, it's what you've seen for the last few years. The next 10 to 11 pages is management discussion analysis. This is just a brief summary of the detail that's behind there. And Noel and his staff take care of preparing most of this. This year, I understand it was a bit of a struggle, not from the putting it together, but they were a little shorthanded to do jury duty requests and that type of thing. So kind of odd, two people from the same department picked for jury duty, but Noel was just filling in on that, so they managed to overcome that roadblock, I guess. And just a couple of things to note about the management discussion analysis. You had some increase in fund balance this year. Most of it was due to, it's detailed out on pages six and seven, six, seven, and eight, I guess. But when it comes right down to it, it's your district doing a really good job of watching your budget. Okay? And watching costs, generally, you budget to have a balanced budget, sometimes a little bit of fund balance used or reserves if you're budgeting, let's say expenditures, and your revenue's not going to keep up with it. But in general, it's a balanced budget, and if you watch your dollars and cents, many times, there's something added to the bottom line. Overall, the one big item that changed this year compared to prior years, and it's not really the general fund or your operational budget that was impacted, but it's your, what I call your Fund 21, it's your donations area. Okay? In the past, when you got student activities, they were run through a student activity accounting, didn't really impact your financials, didn't show up except one or two spots in your financials. The standard-setting body that we have to abide by changed those rules a few years ago, and this year, past year was the year it was to be implemented. And all that activity now went into your donation fund that you keep track of, that rolls donations from one year to the next. So the million-plus dollars of cash that belongs to all your different student activities is now wrapped in with the reporting of your special education fund, your general fund with food service. All of that is in the same area now, which I think is a positive. It gives a little more control and oversight to the board. Not that there were issues with the student activity, but it's, it makes more sense to have it there. Because you do have representatives of the district, teachers that are advisors, they are held accountable for that, even though it's the students raising the money, but the advisors are held to a standard there too, so it makes sense to have it as part of the district. Some positive items to report, your long-term debt last year went down, the notes and bonds that you have went down substantially. Most of that was due to some early retirement of debt, and you were able to levy tax money for that. It didn't materially impact your overall levy or your revenue per valuation. And so you were able to pay off roughly an extra $10 million of debt. Now, you took out debt for improvements about three, four years ago. You managed to pay off an additional 20, I would say around 20 million through that early payment option. You don't always have that. Sometimes debt is not callable, which means you can't pay it early. But in your case, you took advantage of that, and it really didn't impact the mill rate for your district president. So that saves interest in the long run. It's really good, positive results. And again, it goes back to the board and the administration, everybody working together to kind of do what's best for the district overall financially. Other than that, I mean, those are some of the highlights. The only, I guess, the only negatives from a debt standpoint, you have some other post-employment benefits. You provide some health insurance for retirees up to medical age. So if they retire early and meet certain other criteria, so many years employed with the district, that type of thing, you provide some payments toward their health insurance. That liability is refigured basically every year through an actuary, and they issue a report, and we put that data in our report. And that went up a couple of million, yeah, around 24 million. Not outrageous for a district your size. Okay? Out of our Manfok office, we do about 15 or 16 school districts. And you're the largest one that we do, that is not the largest OPEB liability we have. We have some other districts that are smaller that have larger liabilities. So, other items to report, ESU funding, you know, part of the COVID relief packages that the federal government had passed over the course of time. There are three levels of ESU funding. The first two were in place for a portion of the 2021 school year, and Phase 3 was started up for the 21, 22 school year. You have up until, I think, '24, '25 to spend all that money, and it's generally COVID-related I've had districts do, you know, pods with plexiglass shields between students, all kinds of stuff, to make the student environment safer for everybody. So, again, there's some substantial dollars there, and it's, but you have an extended period of time to spend it, which is good. I much prefer that to something where they throw money at you and say, okay, you've got six months to spend it. Doesn't really allow for adequate study and what should be done. But in this case, they did have a nice, long, they got the money in your hands relatively quickly, but the rollout for spending it is extended. So that's a positive from that standpoint. And that's really kind of the crux of the matter there. Again, like I said, you got a good group of people running the financial end of it. They're really helpful. It's just, it's a pleasure to work with the people from your district. Questions?
Thank you. Anyone have questions for Mr. Krieger?
If you ever do one of these and find all kinds of problems, that's when we'll have lots of questions. When it comes back positive and no problems, it doesn't lend a lot of...
Yeah. And just kind of as an aside with the student activities moving into, in the past and still, I do visit on a rotating basis your high schools and your middle schools for student activity reporting. And so I talk to the bookkeepers at those places. I visit, I take small test transactions. I ask them, think about any issues, you know, is there something that you would like me to bring up with the people in the district office? Because, you know, occasionally, there's times where, you know, somebody else on the ground in the field may have an issue, and they're like, well, you know what, I'd like to bring this up to them, but I'm not quite sure how, or that type of thing. And not that it's my main job, but I like to be able to say I can kind of foster that communication if somebody's hesitant. So we do some onsite with those, with the ones that are a little more active, a little more dollars flowing to them.
Yeah, I would just like to hear you say again that we did a good job planning this out, because we have spent much, many hours talking about this, how we can set up our referendums, how we can get them paid down, making sure that the debt is callable so we can pay it early, trying to be really responsible with our taxpayer dollars. And it's really good for the community to hear that we actually know what we're doing.
Yeah. Well, and callable, you know, I've got other districts that may have callable debt, but it's five years down the road, so they maybe take out some debt. If interest rates are falling, they take out some debt. Now, they place it with Associated Bank escrow, and they say, okay, we have that on deposit, we'll pay that for you when it's done. But they're really replacing one debt at a lower interest rate with something that was higher. In your case, you were able to actually pay that debt off, and it totally disappears. You don't have Associated Bank holding money for you. It's just, I don't often see $10 million in consecutive years that doesn't really negatively impact your mill rate and be able to do that. So, yes, you're right. It is a positive, and it's, you know, again, that goes back to the people you have behind the scenes, you know, running the numbers, your financial advisors, Bob and his staff. So it all works together.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, I am seeking a motion to approve the 2020-2021 audit report as presented.
The move.
Second.
All right. First and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are on to item number eight. At the Education Operations Committee meeting, we had a presentation of the financial projection model assumptions. Bob, is there anything else that you'll be presenting tonight?
No. We're building the model based on those assumptions right now, and we'll hopefully have it in January.
Okay. All right. Any comments or questions from any of the board members based on the presentation from last time? Okay. Well, more to come on this in the relatively near future. Okay. Let's see here. On to new business. We will review the proposed 2022 WASB resolutions and provide some direction for Ms. Vandenberg on how to vote at the State Education Convention in January.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So each year, there's a packet of resolutions proposed. Cassie attached, is that everything from the packet this year? So there's attached to the agenda. This will be Ms. Vandenberg's first time going down to represent the district and take action there. So I guess tonight, we would wonder, does anybody have any questions or specific directions on any of the resolutions? Otherwise, oftentimes, what we direct the delegate to do is vote their conscience, right? So it kind of depends on if people have specific direction on resolutions.
We ask that they vote in a certain way.
Okay.
I looked at all the resolutions, and I think they should all be voted in the affirmative.
I have my normal annual question, which is, did administration see anything in there that we maybe would miss? Because I agree with Jane, they all lie to me. But did you notice anything that would be concerning?
I review them also, and I'm very comfortable with them.
All right. Any other comments? Okay. Now, it says that we're listed for action on this, but I don't know if that was appropriate or not.
I think the general consensus is satisfactory.
Okay, okay. So Karen, you have the general direction of the board. Good to go for January. All right, thank you. Okay, next in new business. Item B, approved district-wide, excuse me, safety plan. This is an action item.
Hi.
Dean?
Henry Kremlitzer, student safety specialist for the Wausau School District. The only, that's the same as three years ago. It has to be approved every three years. The only thing that's changed in that is the board policy numbers. They've been changed, and some district personnel.
Okay.
I don't know if you have any other questions besides that. It has to be submitted to offices of school safety by January 1st.
I do have a question. In looking at the members of the committee and then looking at some of the safety requirements, it seemed pretty obvious that Marathon County Department of Health and Social Services was not included. Chapter 48 requires, may require in some instances that if there's some sexual abuse or abuse, that there's a mandated report that has to be made, which just trumps everything else in terms of written requests and statements around harassment, that sort of thing. So I was, my question has to do with, how do you handle that? And why, and would that be an addition that needs to be into this policy?
Sorry, what group was that, Marathon County?
Department of Health and Social Services or Child Protective Services Unit. Because there's a Chapter 48 mandates. If a child comes before you and you suspect they've been abused, that they must be, it must be reported. There is reference to the state statute, but it would seem to me that this would be a particularly appropriate item.
I think that would be a good change to make. We have a policy on that.
You know, we certainly work with Marathon County agencies, Child Protective Services in a number of settings. I don't, I don't see any reason we couldn't include them. I just need to explore, unless you know something, Mr. Kremlitzer? I'm not sure of a reason we couldn't include them. I just need to make sure that it's consistent with our plans. But we do work with them very closely.
I'm sure you do. And it's mandated, and I know we get reports and other things. But it just seemed that it was absent in this.
I believe Ms. Gundry has an update on that.
We have a policy that addresses that specifically. It's called out separately in terms of process. So I'm not sure if it needs to be also in the district safety plan as much as it's in the policy, and we do follow that. There are multiple connections with social services.
Could it be as straightforward as just adding a reference to that policy?
We can do that, yes. Just put a line in there correctly.
Okay.
I'll send you the policy number.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions? Okay, if not, then I'm going to seek a motion to approve the district-wide safety plan with the additional reference to the policy. Do you know the number?
Yep, 8462.
With the additional reference to policy number 8462 as presented.
I'll move that.
Second.
All right, first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, item C. There is a request to add an item to a future agenda item regarding the COVID variant. Specifically, Ms. Rouge is requesting that Dr. Lamont be invited to discuss the new variant and what is known about it at the time of the meeting. So this is policy 0166. So this is not a discussion item per se. This is simply a vote as to whether or not it will be added to a future agenda. Did I state it correctly?
Yes, I just think it's important. Not that we have to have any action item, just for us to be updated on a regular basis as to what's going on.
So we have a first and a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second.
One question. It says specifically next agenda. Does anybody know whether Dr. Lamont is available to do it specifically on the next agenda?
I think we could change it to when he's available.
Okay, edit this.
All right, any other questions? Okay. All those in favor of adding this to a future agenda, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
I don't know what code you put.
We'll have to go to a tally.
Do you want to roll a couple?
Yeah, please.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
John Creacher?
No.
Kyle Low?
Yes.
Cody Nicolai?
No.
Jane Rouge?
Yes.
Lance Trelle?
Yes.
Karen Vandenberg?
No.
Lee Webster?
No.
Pat McKee? No's have it.
All right. So it will not be added to a future agenda item at this point in time. All right, on to D, Education Operations Committee meeting. There was a new course request. This is an action item. At the November Education Operations Committee meeting, John Winter did share a proposed exploratory course. That was Fab Lab 1 and Fab Lab 2. Mr. Winter, is there any updates on any of this since you presented?
No, not really. I guess maybe, maybe one. We completed a grant towards some of the equipment with the Wisconsin Fast Forward Grant just last week, actually. So that is in, and hopefully we get good news back. But focused kind of on some of that equipment right there.
Wonderful. Okay, any questions or comments for Mr. Winter, anyone? All right. Hearing none, I seek a motion for approval of the new Fab Lab 1 and Fab Lab 2 course for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Some move.
Second.
All right, first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congrats, John, more work to do.
Good work, Denver.
Really good work. All right, next on the agenda, this is also an action item. At the November Education Operations Committee meeting, Jennifer Rousher shared the proposed student fees for the 2022, 2023 school year. Any updates on any of these, Dr. Rousher?
No new updates.
Okay. Questions or comments? All right, hearing none, seeking a motion to approve the proposed 2022, 2023 student fees as presented.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now, isn't that a...
No, that's right. So the school safety drills, those are also presented to the board each year. Every school does a safety drill. They write a summary and analysis of it. That written report is attached to the agenda, and we would ask the board to approve those reports.
Okay.
This is in addition to the three-year safety plan that you just approved.
Okay, any questions for administration on this? All right. Hearing none, seeking a motion to approve the school's safety drill evaluations as presented.
Some move.
Second.
All right, first and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, and our last item in this section, our 4K program agreement. The Wausau School District four-year-old kindergarten program has entered into program agreements with community collaboration sites since 2002. During the past five years, the Wausau School District has had agreements with the following sites. Wausau Childcare East and West, Mount View Montessori, YMCA, Newman Catholic Schools. Kara Rakowski, 4K principal, early childhood coordinator, and Julie Shell, director of elementary education, reviewed the program agreements for the 2022 and 2023 school year and had recommended that the board approve them. So was there anything additional? Was looking for Julie or Kara. Nothing?
Just to clarify, the Wausau Childcare would just be Wausau Childcare. They're currently operating out of one facility, so it wouldn't be East and West, but just their organization in general.
Thank you. All right, any questions for anyone? Okay, I'm seeking a motion to approve the four-year-old kindergarten program agreement as presented with the friendly amendment of just being Wausau Childcare.
Some move.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, item 10, referendum proposal. This is a potential action item.
Good evening, everyone. So this presentation has been a while in coming, and it's presented up here. Do I have control of that? Is that what we do? I do, look at that. All right, good. Yeah, exactly. So thank you, thanks for letting us present tonight. The, obviously, there's some facility needs. We've been talking about this for a while. We've got a, you know, we've had quite a process to get input. So tonight, we'll talk first about the needs. Then we'll talk about the process that we use to engage the staff and the community. And then lastly, we'll detail that proposal. And I just wanted to let people know, I'm going to go back to the beginning because we don't know who is here or watching, who hasn't been involved in the conversations. So this would be a kind of a comprehensive review, and it's nice to see it all in one package. So if you've heard some of this before, if you think you've heard some of it, you may have. So, so thank you. I just said that. Before we get started, I would like to thank all the people who've been involved in this, right? We've had hundreds of community members and staff members that took part in either surveys and/or face-to-face conversations. School board members, you've gotten feedback from your constituents and brought that into the conversation. The administrative team, most of whom are here tonight. It's nice to see you all. I'm glad you could make it. They've, the principals were all interviewed by our partners from Nexus, who helped us. They were a key partner in developing our analysis and our proposals. And just specifically, I want to thank Larry Seiler, Bob Test, Diana White. They've been key in bringing all this together. So thanks to everybody for your input. Very proud to be sharing what we've developed tonight. So let's start with needs. As you know, we've gone to referendum before for facility needs. And frankly, while some of those projects have been completed out of necessity, many of them are the same that we've asked for, and those needs are still there. There's five areas that are kind of broken. The needs are kind of broken into five areas. So you can see up here, we have a number of outdated systems. We have a large number of maintenance projects that need some attention. We have the safety and security. And then we have some outdated instructional needs, outdated co-curricular or athletic needs, and some outdated arts facilities. So we will break, I'll describe at a fairly high level what those needs are in each of those five areas. So under facilities, so obviously, that would include, you know, heating and cooling. It would include electrical systems, lighting. You know, for instance, even this room here, these are fluorescents. We know that LEDs are, they're more efficient. They create a better work light. They also, we don't, you know, when I talk to staff, our maintenance staff, they talk about the amount of time they spend replacing ballasts and bulbs. You know, all of that is obviously minimized with some of the lighting issues. And then you'll see here, again, some, just some inefficiencies, some of the single-pane windows, worn-out materials, whether it's floors, ceilings, roofs, pavement. So that's, those, at a high level, those are some of the things that are included in our deferred maintenance for our facilities. And we'll talk more about that in a minute. That's just the high-level introduction. Then our safety and security. So again, our schools were built, you know, before the more elaborate safety and security, you know, systems were introduced. And so just as a reminder, in many of our schools right now, when a visitor comes during the day, they hit the buzzer. A front-office staff person sees a video of the person out there, and then they allow that person in. In most of our schools, once that visitor steps into our schools, they don't go directly into the office. And in many of our schools, there's a little bit of a trek. And if you're new to the school, difficult to even know sometimes where the office is. And so that creates two issues. One, it's not very welcoming. Secondly, now we have someone in the school who basically has access to the entire school. We would like those entrances to be changed so that the first person that a visitor sees is someone in the front office, right? It's more welcoming, and they're also able to just confirm their purpose there, give them their visitor badge, help them understand where they're supposed to go. So it's both more secure and more welcoming. Mass notification systems. If you've been kind of paying attention in the last year or so, realize that Wausau West and the main elementary, that some of the PA systems there went down. So we had to replace those. So, you know, you heard a little bit about our safety plans tonight and our safety drills. We have a lot of safety protocol in place, policies, procedures, and a lot of that is based on effective communication. So that's a key piece for us, as well as video surveillance. I think we're all familiar with the video cameras that we have in many of our schools. And then, of course, traffic flow. You know, certainly, you know, John Muir is one of our primary examples of traffic flow that could be improved. Mr. Gallagher's done a nice job making some changes this year. And yet, we have some plans that could improve that even more. Hawthorne Hills would be another example, right? Many of our schools have some traffic flow issues. I would remind the board and the community that two years ago, we did have a car student collision over at John Muir. Luckily, no serious injuries, but certainly that's something we never want to repeat. Um, so that's the high-level safety and security. Instructional needs. So, um, you know, when, when most of our schools were built, um, lecture, note-taking, right, was kind of the format for learning, right? Uh, and now, what we know, of course, is that if students can engage in smaller groups and some collaborative problem-solving, um, you know, that, that type of instruction is, is more effective, it's more enjoyable, um, and really kind of mirrors the way, the, the work today, right, in many of our work environments. We would like our classrooms, um, and our, our learning environments to really reflect that. So in addition to classroom improvements, um, you know, things like, um, the steam rooms, uh, not steam rooms, not, not like a sauna, but, uh, science, uh, technology, engineering, arts, and math, right? A little later today, you'll hear from one of our principals who've had, who's had some experience of those, uh, about some of the value there, right? So that would be another, um, learning environment improvement. The Environmental Learning Center at the school for us would be another, uh, updated or new learning space for our, for our students and staff. Um, accessibility, um, you know, one prime example you'll see a little bit later tonight is the, uh, auditorium at Wassa West. In the proposal, there is a, a new ramp, again, to improve accessibility, and that's not the only example, there's several small examples across our district, we want to improve accessibility for students. And then, of course, the separate gymnasiums and cafeterias, you'll hear some of our principals speak to that tonight, and the, the main goal there, uh, is to allow learning to drive the schedule and not necessarily, um, lunch and, and FIED. Fine arts facilities. So, obviously, you know, uh, district budgets have gotten tighter over the years, and so while we really focus on our core mission, um, there are a number of fine arts facilities that could stand to be updated, expanded, and improved. Um, and so, um, you got, you see a list here, um, again, some of the prime examples would be at, at John Muir. Sorry, I keep looking over there at John Muir and Wassa West is what I'm looking at. Um, but we could, there, there's a, a number of improvements that you'll see there, um, and in the drama and theater, um, again, these are mainly secondary, uh, expansions or improvements, uh, but a number of, of, uh, improvements in that area. And then lastly, would be, um, co-curricular and athletic facilities. So training and practice facilities, performance spaces, um, locker rooms, and some field lighting, and I would say too, um, field turf, there is a proposal in here, we actually separated it up, because for whatever reason, synthetic turf seems to, uh, be a divisive issue, so I wanna speak to that, um, in, in just a little bit. So those are the high-level areas that we would like to improve, right? Now, just want to let you know that as we considered the vast number and, and the scope of the possible projects, we use these three principles as really as, as guiding benchmarks. Obviously, we have our student, our, our district's mission, right? Um, advanced student learning, achievement, and success. That was a piece that, you know, everything in this project, in this proposal, will, will impact that mission. Secondly, we are very cognizant of our responsibilities to taxpayers, um, all of our taxpayers, those on a fixed income, um, you know, we, we hear, you know, every now and then, you know, price of food is going up, right? You know, uh, you know, just, there are price increases all the time, that was constantly in our, uh, in our minds. Um, and then lastly is equality. We know that across our district, there are, um, different schools that have different opportunities, students and staff that have different opportunities, and we wanna level that playing field. I'd like to give you two examples of how we applied these. Um, one is around theater, uh, and another is around that synthetic turf. Okay, so, um, at Wassa, the board had an opportunity, if you recall, this fall, to do a tourist in schools, and they went to Wassa West, and one of the places that they saw was, uh, what we, uh, referred to as the set construction area. It was very small, uh, it was hard to access, um, and, and frankly, it really wasn't much of a set construction area.
Almost nonexistent.
Almost nonexistent, thank you for, yes, yeah. Um, no real dressing rooms to speak of, and so that's something, when we talk about student success, part of that is facilities. So in the proposal at West, um, we have, um, a, a very effective space around, that would allow them to, um, create their sets, uh, have dressing rooms, actually have wings so that students can safely and effectively get on and off the stage during performances. So we were very excited about that plan. I'm gonna shift down to equality for a second. So if we're doing that at West, do we have the same opportunities at East? East has different facilities, and I think we're very aware of that. Um, they do have a set construction area, um, we did ask Nexus to develop a, an addition that would be very similar to what we're proposing at West. It was roughly three million dollars. He said, "That's a lot of money," right? So we wanted to now think about those taxpayers. So the problem at East isn't that they don't have a set construction area or dressing rooms, what they lack is storage. So all of the sets that they've built have to be stored somewhere. Right now, they're really stored in their set construction area, so their set construction area is impacted by a lack of storage. So instead of proposing the three-million-dollar addition, we're proposing a quarter or a half-million-dollar storage facility. So in this way, um, we are supporting student success. We will have equitable or equal facilities, uh, for, for students at both schools, and, you know, we reduced that bill by about two and a half million dollars. So, so that's one example. Um, the other is, uh, frankly, about the synthetic turf. Um, we've, we've have, uh, athletics is a, is an important thing. We went back today, uh, I looked at the, the, the parent survey from last spring, there's a specific question that asks parents, um, "How important are various aspects of, of a child's educational experience? How important is that to their success?" And there was a specific question about athletics, and ninety-three percent of parents said that athletics are important or very important. So, uh, of, from, so clearly, you know, we are being responsive to our parents, uh, when we say, you know, we wanna invest in, in athletic, uh, facilities. So, um, a little later, you'll see a, uh, a proposal for some turf. The first ask, uh, was, "What would it cost to turf all of our competition fields at both high schools?" That number came in at about ten million dollars. Again, a large price tag, uh, and so we went back and said, "Okay, what's the real need?" And so the proposal you'll see tonight is just the infields of baseball and softball, including the base paths where most of the wear is, and then one synthetic multi-use field at each high school. Again, trying to support student success, you know, offer equal opportunities, and be responsible to the, to the taxpayers. So that's just a couple of examples that when you, when you see this, those weren't just words, we really, we've really been, uh, pretty surgical about the, the, the projects that we've included in the, in the proposal. So I hope that, uh, helps to, uh, understand those. All right. Let's see, go. There we go. So those are high-level needs. You'll, again, uh, we've invited our principals here to, tonight to talk about more specific school needs. Before we do that, just wanna remind people of the engagement process, and the first thing we want you to know is that we listened. There, we started with the online survey, um, we had about twenty-five-hundred responses, we've referred to that survey many times throughout this process. Uh, in addition to that, we had three, uh, face-to-face community engagement sessions, uh, where we had really good, honest conversation about needs versus wants, uh, a lot of, uh, healthy debate about, about the future of the district and the needs. Um, we had a staff online survey as well, in addition to staff listening sessions, this fall, I went to every school, and, and in some schools, there was a lot of conversation about referendum, in others, less so. So we did a, a follow-up survey to our staff that just closed Sunday, so we will be getting results from that, um, shortly. Um, in addition to that, uh, Mrs. White has, uh, facility needs write a, a webpage with a, um, an instant feedback forum, as you can see there, we can show that to you if you're interested. She's done a nice job of engaging social media as well as the, the media itself. They've been interested in our, in our conversation. So there's been a lot of input, a lot of opportunities for input. So in addition to listening to you, uh, keep forgetting to move this one, we also heard people. And we know this is, uh, a, a, a debate about the, the future of the district, but what we heard people say is, "Please don't close our schools, please don't merge our schools." So that is not a part of the proposal tonight. Um, and we can certainly engage in that conversation if we, if, if, if there's, uh, an appetite for that. Okay, so let me pause here for a second. What I would like to do, um, we, we met with the principals again last week, uh, as I mentioned, the, the, the projects that, uh, that we're proposing are very similar to the last referendum, because again, they went undone, uh, those needs are still there. Uh, we do have some things we completed, I did mention the, um, the PA system at, at West and Maine, we also did some significant hand railing work that needed to be done at West, so some projects have, have come off the, off the list, um, but we also added some, as you'll see, and one of the first is, uh, is, is Wassa West. That was, we had a few million dollars planned at West, but frankly, uh, the feedback we got was, "This really needs to be done," and that, um, the, the, the failure, if you will, of that PA system really kind of added to the urgency on, on our practice, and not, there's a lot of work that needs to be done there, it's in good shape, um, it just, it, it needs a lot of TLC. So, um, I think at this time, I'll start to invite principals up, uh, to speak about the, their projects, so Mr. Steckbauer, would you hold it up? And after him, we'll hear from, uh, Mr. Galligan about, uh, John Muir. While he's coming up, just a, a little note, um, as you look at these maps, obviously this one is small, the key to the right, uh, you'll look at the, the map of the school, anything in green is a new addition, anything in blue is either light to heavy renovation, anything in white, uh, there would be, you know, deferred maintenance, lighting, flooring, anything like that. So it doesn't mean they won't be touched, uh, that's just kind of the key. So, Jeb, do you mind?
Can you let me stay right here?
Sure, yeah, then I, I think they can probably hear you better, yeah.
All right, great. Well, thank you very much for having us, uh, again, tonight. Um, as Dr. Hiltz stole my thunder a little bit with a few of the items, that's all right? Um, but I think he touched on a few things that I wanted to touch on as well. I know that many of you saw some of the areas that, uh, he already has, has spoken of. Um, so I'll just kinda start and take you, uh, along the, a little bit of a tour. Initially, starting with the green area and the normal west entrance, um, we, we have talked about that for a couple of years now, the safety, and, and Dr. Hiltz mentioned that, with people that enter our building, they have, they can go right or left and kind of off on their own, fortunately, we haven't had that. Um, but that would take care of that issue, would also provide us, uh, a bigger space for meetings, uh, with our clubs and activities, um, community room, and then, um, it kind of leads into the auditorium, uh, work that, that will happen. And one of the things that we've struggled with, and I, I, I know I've seen many of you in our auditorium, and, and I'm sure you've seen folks that struggle to, uh, if they have mobility issues, getting to either, anywhere really in the auditorium other than the very back, and then if you were privy to seeing our little elevator that gets us down to the stage area, um, obviously, that, that needs work as well. So that would be part of this, this plan, so we're very excited about that. Um, in terms of our performers, they're very excited, um, Dr. Hiltz mentioned this too, with those wings on the sides, and this year was a, um, we made it work, uh, we didn't go to the grand this year for, um, our winter concert, but one of the main reasons we've gone there in the past is because we have large amounts of kids to enter and leave the stage, uh, at, at one time. And one of the things that we don't have is those wings provide that space to get kids on and off. So that will be, uh, very nice for our performers, um, and also for our, our drama and musicals. Um, and, and you saw the scene shot, I heard that, I heard you mention that. So whatever, if that was a scene shot, yes. Uh, so I think the, the next, uh, what's proposed here will, will certainly be, uh, a great upgrade for that. And then, um, kind of in that same area, our band choir and orchestra rooms, um, there's some ADA issues in, in those, there's some supervision issues in those with our practice rooms. Um, things were different back when, when these were built, and they were great, um, but I think it, it's probably time for a refresh there as well. Um, some of the acoustical, uh, aesthetics too, I believe, are certainly dated. Um, so with that, those portables on the end of the building would, would come off, those portables, where I think were mid-nineties and were to be there for a couple of years, so they've, they've, we've certainly got our money's worth out of those. Um, and then with the rebuild in the front, that's where the, kind of the main office is going to go, and then we'll repurpose where the main office is now to people services offices with a couple of classrooms to kind of make up for that lost, the lost classroom space that we had from the portables. Um, so kind of moving to the other side of the building, we have, in the, the green on the north part of the building there, um, part of that is a new, uh, girls' team locker room, and part of that, uh, the reasoning for that is we're kind of pushing our commons, uh, north, so that we have, and this is a, a little bit out of my realm, but I was assured by Karen Fox that it is a necessity, the efficiency of bringing, uh, food and, of other items in, the, where the loading dock is situated, and then where they enter the building, and then going around corners, it's a lot of manual labor where it could be done with, uh, carts and things, i- if there was good access. So that's, that, that is why there's a new, then, team locker room created, and that kind of flows into our current space that, where we have our, uh, weight room and cardio facility. Um, and I believe we toured that as well. Um, that was, certainly has provided us a great space, uh, but I think it's time, I know the, it's not, again, not my realm of authority here and, uh, expertise, but, uh, the HVAC is not good there, uh, as often our pipes freeze and things like that, depending on the way the wind's blowing, I guess, but, um, but that area is, is, is another area that I think will really benefit our kids, and it's not just for our athletes, it's, I mean, we have, we have students that utilize that during FIED, it's a teaching station, um, they make up FIED classes, that's an open lab, and we have students, um, who aren't really involved in athletics, that just like to work out, and so they're there after school. So if you ever get around, um, throughout the day, it's a busy place, and certainly promoting good health and wellness is, is a good thing. So, um, so that would be, uh, a welcomed addition. Um, the blue part then, just to the, um, all the way east, but just below that, that little green box, is the current locker room space for our team locker rooms. And, um, again, built back in the day where things were different, and, um, so I think part of that is, we're certainly in need of new finishes and new tower work and things like that, um, because what, what is there is, it's, it's very difficult to clean right now, um, 'cause the finishes are basically worn off. But I think with-
Get better ventilation in those boys locker rooms.
Yeah, that would be a good thing for everyone. Um, but I think the other thing with that is to kind of upgrade to, um, I guess, where the world is heading in terms of privacy and things like that throughout a locker room and, and showering, um, we're, we're definitely, the communal showers that we have are really nonexistent in new builds, um, in the state, as far as I've seen. So, um, so we're excited about that as well. Um, if you kind of go up to our third floor, I know many of you been, have been in our largest, large group room, and our second largest, which is three-twelve and three-fifteen, and those rooms are certainly functional, but again, if you, you look at the ceiling tiles and, um, the, the aesthetics in, in those rooms, it's just time for, for a refresh, uh, in terms of the technology as well, so. Um, lighting in the backfield is probably the, the, the last thing that I would talk about today, uh, but we, we did talk about that before. Um, any questions that I can answer?
I know the lighting in the backfield has been, um, for discussion tw- for fifteen, twenty years, that we really need to do it.
Yeah. Well, there's a couple of reasons for that. Well, you know, one is certainly, it helps to give us longer, uh, usage in, in the, especially be, you know, before daylight savings time goes on and those kinds of things, but all- But also, it's helpful for, so we don't have to have kids get out of school quite as early to get to their events. And, you know, a lot of our kids, our soccer players in particular, they would love to have people come and watch them. And oftentimes, our kids, our other kids are still practicing and things like that. And so when they do get a night game, it's pretty special for them.
So in other words, a building that's 50 years old needs some care right now.
Yeah.
Your theater with the calendars on the side and all of that, the lighting, the sound system that needs to be replaced. Yeah, some of that hasn't been touched, I would assume, for many, many years.
That is correct. When you get into our theater, certainly the structural parts, but really the sound and lighting and curtains, I mean, really needs a revamping.
And your weight room, early 90s, was built and has a detached building. So a lot of care needs to be put into that.
I have a question about one of the remodel spaces. One of the areas that we toured when we were over there was kind of the foods area. And I remember you talking about sort of a dream for more commercial kitchen prep stations for those students. Is that built into some of those remodel spaces at all?
It's kind of a, we're kind of proposing kind of a mix with that. So not exactly just commercial, but I think there'll be some opportunities for a little of both. But definitely a remodel and definitely upgrading with some ADA accessibility stations. Certainly new cabinetry.
Jeb, what about the, it says high priority storefront repair replays. You talking about the West School store? I'm on infrastructure, the top item. I've gotten quite, if that is about the school store, I mean, I hear a lot about the business, education courses.
School stores would be proposed to be moved, right, to the campus area? Yeah, well, you'll see in.
We don't, we don't have to.
I don't have that one. What's that? Well, I can't really point it out there. It's hard to see, but.
Is it being addressed? I guess that's all I'm looking for.
Yes, yes. New space. With the commons, kind of with the kitchen being pushed, it's being put in a new space where hopefully higher visibility for it as well.
I know there's a lot of excitement about that from kids in the business, and there's severe limitations with.
Yeah, for sure.
With how it operates today. So that's, that's great.
Okay. Any others? Thank you. And if you want to go ahead, Pat, if you want to come up and speak to John Muir. And while he's, while Patrick is coming up, just want to remind the people that a detailed list of a lot of the projects for these schools is available on the. Can you pull that up, Cassie? So on the website, if you go to that 2021 Facility Needs tab and go down and click on, this is the April 21 referendum from last spring. On this site, just a reminder, is, oh, then under Proposed Plans, there. Each school has the same maps you're seeing tonight. There's a video from the principals and a list underneath. Here's John Muir, for instance. And again, these plans have changed slightly, but the overall, or the overarching projects are the same. If you can scroll down a little bit, Cassie. Then down below, I think this is what Mr. McKee was just looking at. This is a fairly detailed list of the projects and the costs. So tonight, we aren't going to go through every, you know, every line item, of course. But we do want you to know that is available. So thank you, Cassie. So we can go back to the John Muir thing. Now, I just want to point this, I didn't point this up before Mr. Steckbauer was speaking. We do have a price tag under each school. People have asked us, how can this possibly be so expensive? So between Wausau West and John Muir, this is over $60 million. There's a lot of work in these two schools. They're two of our, they're our largest schools. And they need a lot of attention. And so as you, as each principal presents, you'll be able to see the proposed investment in each, in each school. So Mr. Galligan, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for letting me present as well. I was told to be quick because I know everybody's busy. So I'm going to go quick, but I'll be happy to answer any questions. But a lot of this is very similar to what you saw in previous iterations of our plans. And so many of the things that Dr. Hilt's talked about in terms of the secure entrance, the traffic pattern, these are things that I've discussed with you a couple of times and are still very big needs. Mr. Boucher mentioned a building like Wausau West is 50 years old. Ours is 60. And so we have those needs and a few more probably in terms of John Muir as well. But one of the other big parts of this that really trickles down into many of the green spaces that you see on this proposal is the idea of really fully implementing the house model back at John Muir. We've done a lot to try and bring teams back. We saw that value last year during some necessity changes that we had to make. So our teachers have bought into that. We think that's a real positive for us. But it's very, very difficult to do that in the environment and the building space that we have right now. So many of the proposed changes you would see affect the arts, affect CTE, affects, you know, different aspects of things that we're trying to bring to the building. We want to try to improve our health spaces, our physical education spaces. We've got a lot of kids, as you know, in that building. And we went on a tour and I tried to show you and highlight some of the spaces that we're using in multiple different ways, like our cafeteria that also doubles as our wrestling room after school and some of those kind of things, right? So again, many, many needs. I'm happy to go through lots and lots of detail for you. But some of the biggest things again would be improvements to try and give our kids more opportunities at our level to be able to expand and learn about things. One of the real keystones that I try to talk to our staff about constantly is, our job is really to give kids a great experience and families a great experience at our level so that they're prepared to do the work that they need to do at the high school level as a former high school person for a long time. I feel like that's a perspective that I can bring to John Muir. And I've been trying to work with our faculty. They do great. But something that I think we can do even more, but we would need some help with some facility upgrades to make that happen.
Does this get us back to the middle school team concept?
Well, we're sort of there right now. We have, we have teams created and we have kids working in that model. But yes, this would help us even more, especially the green space that you see on the north part there. That's proposed to be a new sixth grade wing, basically. And we might modify that a little bit, but in essence, that would give us the opportunity in the spaces we need to have all of our health classes have their own room, let's say. Global languages, be able to have their own rooms, and many other things that we're kind of doubling up right now.
That's really important because.
And it'd be great for the, for the middle school, which is the name of it, to actually be run as a full-up middle school instead of a junior high. I mean, we've had hours of meetings about why that's better and why the educational results are better. When you break it down into the smaller team or house concept, it would be great if we could do it.
Could you explain just a little bit for people that don't understand the house idea? You know, that's used, it's terminology, it's been around for about 10, 15 years. But what do you mean by that?
I think at the most basic level, you have teachers working with students on a regular basis so that they understand those students and students understand how to work with those teachers and feel comfortable. That's a big word in our environment and in the world today is we want to make sure that everybody feels confident and comfortable about asking questions, about trying to explore ideas, about learning new things. And the house model really helps us, I think, in that regard because you're getting a close relationship with teachers and students and families really for that matter.
So you're also stating the fact that it's a large building, it's a large enrollment. You're making a large school small by using the house philosophy in that the students really see the same teachers all the time as they would in a smaller school.
Yeah, now sometimes they don't like that, but you know, I must point that out too.
That's not a part of the discussion.
Yes, that's a different question, right? But I think that in general, it's a positive, the positives far outweigh the negatives in that regard.
So big schools can be successful in that way.
Absolutely, yes. And based upon the numbers that Mr. Tess and others have presented to you guys, I think those numbers will continue to be that way. And I think this is a realistic proposal that'll help us do a lot of things. The other thing I'd mention is, you know, again, Wausau West's presentation talked about the music aspect. I didn't really mention that, but we've talked about that many times. There's a lot of space in there devoted to refreshing and giving us a new experience for students to have, the fine arts in many ways, but especially our music areas that are very tight right now and very compacted. And could use some help in that regard.
When more students are involved with music, they are academically more successful. Am I just, am I correct there?
I think you're accurate, yes.
There's a large space that was a part of the old heating system that is absolutely useless right now, as from what I could gather when we toured. Is there going to be something done with that?
Well, I think that's a little bit beyond my discussion point. You might want to talk to Mr. Seiler or Dr. Hilt or someone like that. But I think it would be great if we could use that space, make use of that space for a lot of different purposes. Yes, it is quite a large space in the building. And I think we'd be working in that area, so it would only make sense to me that that would be the right time to maybe work on that.
And there is a line item for steam boiler demolition, I think.
And they're, if anybody's picturing, they're bigger than what you're picturing. It's ridiculous.
They're small.
And not used.
We'll save a lot of space with the new efficient heating system. There's no doubt about that.
What do these plans do for, I guess, your capacity? Obviously, I know you're fairly full there right now at about 11, 1200 kids. Does this expand capacity a little bit or?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, you look at the space to the northwest there. The gym space is going to give us an extra resource or an area for gym and for other activities as far as that goes. The classroom wings to the north part there, the music space again. But even in the blue, a lot of those areas are going to be new areas for students to, again, have different classrooms or reuse space. We also will certainly have a new secure entrance as part of this proposal, and that would be a big priority for us. And then, you know, like I mentioned, some of the traffic and other things for safety reasons too. But yeah, many new spaces, the facility at the bottom there with the expanded locker rooms will once again kind of address a lot of the concerns that Mr. Steckbauer mentioned with Wausau West as well.
And when it comes to capacity, I think it's important for people to know that the middle school concept, it requires more room, more capacity than the junior high model. So that's why when we get overcrowded, we end up losing our teams, losing our houses, and going back to more of a high school type of model.
One other point I would like to make on John Muir, and if I, going back a few years, when we were talking about behavioral issues that were going on. And I'm sure everybody on the board has gotten calls about, you know, behavioral issues. And I recall you saying at the time that the facility can lend itself at times to behavioral issues just because of the way the configurations are. Sometimes kids feel like they're, you know, we're on top of one another. This to me, I guess, seems like it just makes for an overall better student experience. Is that a correct assessment of that?
Well, that's, that's the word I use a lot of times, and I would agree with that. I think it's part of that philosophy. I don't know if I stood in front of you and said that the students being packed together provides or creates more behavioral issues. But I think what we're seeing this year is just with everybody back in the building, yes, we have some behavioral concerns because there are more students there and there are more people to take care of. So any way in which we can support and create a better environment and experience, I would bet that that is going to help with behavioral concerns too, because kids are more invested. Kids are more involved in what they're doing, liking things, what they're doing, and have better relationships with the faculty as well.
Well, when we talked about that, one of the things we went over were some of the traffic patterns as well. Which again, I don't want to keep harping on the middle school concept, but if you keep students contained within a team or a house area as opposed to everybody in the school going back and forth all over, it just, the traffic patterns, when you get congested, is, it just lends to have more problems.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Galligan. Appreciate it. See, Mr. Bushman and Dr. Young, are you both here? Excellent. So we'll hear about Wausau East and EEA. Just a note, obviously, you know, East has been around 20 years, right? Am I correct there? You'll see there's not a lot of work needed here. And frankly, I just want to say that, you know, that's the hope with this extensive investment is that, you know, everybody can have a school that is, you know, comfortable and meets the needs and doesn't need a lot of continuous maintenance, right? This would be just one example of that. But hello, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having us tonight. Like Dr. Hilt said, we're really lucky. We have a really nice facility. It's well-maintained. Our custodial staff does a great job with it, so there's not a lot of work that needs to be done there. We probably have three overarching enhancements or improvements. The best of you, when you walk in for the security reasons, that that can be more customer-friendly or welcoming, that it's a face-to-face contact when you walk into the building, so you'll have a secretary there. The one thing that East doesn't have a whole lot of is storage. So one of the proposals that we have, as Dr. Hilt's talked about that, is adding a storage facility onto the adjacent parking lot from our auditorium. Our auditorium's beautiful, but our set building stage is very cramped with props and sets that are on there. And then our theater production crew has their costumes and things tucked behind stairwells in different places. So to give them their space that they can utilize would be really effective for them. And then really, the third item that we had is the lighting portion of it. And Mr. Steckbauer spoke to that a little bit. The only thing that I'd really add that's probably an additional benefit for the district would be the community involvement that we could enhance with it as well by opening up to baseball teams that have tournaments throughout the night or softball or soccer. So that would be something that we can reach out to the community with as well.
And for the EEA section of things, again, it would be the safe and secure entrance that everyone has already talked about. And by relocating our office to create that safe and secure entrance, that's going to enable us to repurpose some space. We currently have a very large office area. We inherited the space, and it's a beautiful office. But it's not the most user-friendly in terms of serving students and families. So by moving the office to create that safe and secure entrance, it allows us to repurpose that other space and use it to meet more student and family needs. And that would include a food pantry and also some laundry facilities in addition to some more office space for pupil services.
I think there's some, Mr. Seiler, would there be anything else you'd talk about from this facility? I know, I think we're doing some significant, like parking lots and.
Yeah, so as everyone knows, that facility was built on an area that's been pretty historically wet. So we've seen a lot of issues with the pavement falling apart and deteriorating, probably a little more prematurely than you would expect, basically because it's built on a pretty wet substrate. A lot of the paved areas are also deteriorating at a much quicker pace than some other schools that were built on drier, drier areas. So outdoors, all those paved surfaces really require a lot of attention. And obviously, there's a lot of outdoor paved areas.
Thank you. Questions about EEA or Wausau East?
I think your situation with new high schools built in mid 2000, the first thing to get cut when it's over budget, storage. And I think people need to know that, you know, looking at this building, it's a beautiful building. But that was one of the first things I looked at and saw that there was no storage. And storage costs money, and that's why it gets cut when buildings are first being built, unfortunately. Then you end up paying more later on, and that's, I think, where we're at, unfortunately.
That's cheaper to include it at the time of the bill, but it's one of those things I thought, looking forward.
All right. Thank you very much. With Mrs. White, are you available? There she is, Libby.
Me?
Yeah.
I think you met Diana.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. No, yeah, Libby, come on up. Yeah. Libby White, principal at Franklin Elementary.
Hi, just didn't mean everybody.
There we go. What are you excited about?
Mostly, I would say, air conditioning. And also Franklin's 1966, we're right at that 55 years, so very similar that you heard from John Muir and West. There's many things that need to be updated. What we, has happened over the last 55 years is the city has grown. Bridge Street and Fifth Street have become major thoroughfares. Actually, checked out a traffic count just to see what, where we're at. And there was one in 2019, and there was about 22,000 cars on average on a day. And I noticed going up to the highway, that was only at about 38,000 on 5139. So if you think about the number of cars there. So our main goal that both the families and community and staff would like to see is to take our main entrance off Fifth Street and to relocate it in the back of the building on the south side, so it would actually face the neighborhood there. Similar, I think, like how Grant School's entrance there faces back to the neighborhood. So the back of the building would face Bridge Street and Fifth. Number one, just welcoming and convenience of families being able to enter during the. Number one, just welcoming and convenience of families being able to enter during the day, and also safety of our students. We also have a little patch right now, the only designated staff parking is across the street of Bridge Street. We'd like to take a little bit of our green space to have a faculty lot, so staff also can safely just park and not have to cross Bridge to get to work each day. But those are some of the highlights. Any questions, Franklin?
All right. Thank you, Libby.
Thank you. Yes, Stacy.
All right. Ms. Morosik and Hawthorne Hills Elementary.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lesapne Morosik, and we're excited because we'll get a new road. Not many schools get a new road, but if you can see, we really have a dead end right now. It causes a lot of concerns with safety if there would be an emergency and we needed to get a lot of vehicles down there, and we had parent traffic. End of the day, drop-off and pickup is an out-of-body experience. We've got it down to a science, but it really is a challenge to keep families patient with the understanding that we need to be safe and at the same time as quick as we can. But that road will allow for a much smoother traffic flow. We can separate bus drop-off and pickup from parent drop-off and pickup, and for the most part, I think parents will be much happier because it's gonna be much more smooth. So, and we'll also get some additional parking because right now, we really wanna get parents and the community in our building, see the amazing things we're doing. With that, we're really parking all the way down on Ten Street. So all the way down Kick Bus to Ten Street because there is no additional parking other than what the staff parks in. So yeah, it'd be fantastic.
And of course, at Hawthorne, there's a number of the other improvements as well. This is just something that's unique to the Hawthorne Hills School and community.
I got the thirty-second infomercial guide too, so there's a lot of things we're excited about. But that's one of the biggest things that's different from the other schools. Any questions? Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Beck in Hewitt, Texas. After that, just so you prepare, it would be Mrs. Franks with Jones. Evening, Phil.
Oh, that's a nice number, isn't it?
Watch the corner. Yeah, right underneath your feet.
Well, good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Phil Beck, and the principal of Hewitt Texas Elementary School. You probably know Hewitt's a small country school. Our enrollment's about a hundred twelve kids. We're celebrating our sixtieth, excuse me, our sixtieth school year this year, so that's kind of exciting. We are surrounded by outdoor beauty with nature trails throughout the woods, outdoor wetland study area. Our facilities have been really well-maintained over the years, but just a little outdated with a few things. I'm really excited about some pieces like the sensory room, a special lab, a STEAM or STEM lab, a community room. I'm not gonna really touch on those pieces right now because some of my other principal colleagues are getting hit those more in-depth. Those are some things that are common across some of the buildings. So what I wanna share with you tonight is something not as exciting, but just, I think it's kinda overlooked, security cameras. And those, some of you may know, a year ago, last December, three individuals broke into our building in the evening. Fortunately, we didn't have any students, our parents or staff in the building, it was in the evening again. So nothing was stolen, there was no vandalism or damage. Alarm kinda scared them out. Law enforcement responded really promptly. We were able to continue with school the next day. So all in all, I mean, it was not as traumatic as it could've been, but it just made us really kind of be aware, like, you know, if there's a little bit of a, little bit of a blind spot, you know, night vision, you know, anything that's a little blurry where you can't recognize face or license plates quite as clearly as what you'd like, just makes that whole process, working with law enforcement, obviously, a little bit not as efficient as what it could be with, and I'm not a camera expert, I'm just kinda sharing an experience. And I know cameras are in some of the plans with the schools, and just speaking to that importance. Because it was traumatic for some of our families, even though there was very minimal in terms of any damage other than a window, really. But it was still traumatic for people just knowing that that happened. For some of the older folks in our community, it kinda triggered memories back in nineteen ninety-one or ninety-two, there was actually a break in the building and arson, so they burned, they burned extensive office area. I think they closed school for the rest of the year. Dr. Webster, you might know a little bit more. You've lived around that area, don't you?
I do.
Yeah. So that was traumatic, but, so just, it's one of those little things you don't always think about, right? You know, like, we talk about secure entrances and kinda the parking lot that Libby talked about, and I think cameras are just another small piece of that security issue.
Cameras are so much better today than they were, and they're much cheaper. I installed cameras at my house recently, and going to see at night, it's amazing what you can pick up now.
And these will be installed in most, if not all, of our schools.
You're right.
Yeah. Questions about Hewitt? Thank you, Phil.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I will just add, Phil mentioned that Hewitt is well-maintained. I do wanna note, you know, Mr. Seiler and his team, they, these schools are well-maintained. They take a lot of pride in keeping the schools clean and taking care of the equipment. The projects that we're talking about tonight are really those that are beyond the capital budget that we, you know, we have on an annual basis. So, yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, guys.
All right. Mrs. Franks?
Hey. Good evening, everyone. I am Robin. I'm the principal at GD Jones, and like Kale over at Wassa East, we don't have a whole lot of needs at GD Jones. If you were with us back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, you know that we were the recipient, very lucky recipient of a lot of monies at that time, which added additional classrooms to our building, but also the four K Learning Academy, one of four at Jones. So that's, that's, it was awesome. That's no other way for me to put that. I think what I'm excited the most about with this proposal moving forward is, one of the things that we have been working really hard on is raising money for new playground equipment. The current equipment that was there prior to this school year was in place since ninety-seven, out of date, security, I'm sorry, safety concerns, and just wasn't, it just wasn't what we needed it to be for kiddos. And so the last four or five years as a building, as a team, we've been working hard to fundraise. So this school year, yay, would be some building funds with some fundraising, and then also with a little bit of help from Larry, we were able to put in about half of our playground equipment that we wanted to. And so this proposal would allow us to have the ability to put in the rest of our playground equipment, including rubberized flooring, if I'm saying that, flooring bottom, safety thing on the bottom for the kiddos. So that's one of the things. And then the other things that I'm, thing that I'm very excited about is the proposal of a community room at Jones. We kind of have that-ish, if you will, as we walk into the main entrance. We have that, an area where our four K families are able to come in and fill out enrollment paperwork that they need to. All of us, many of us have bridging brighter smiles from the community that comes in and works with our kiddos, providing dental care. Having that space would allow us the opportunity for them to work there, would have a sink available to them, what they would need in order to work with the students right there in that area. So I talked fast, I apologize for that, but those are really two of the highlights from the proposal at Jones that I'm excited about.
And again, those would be repeated in most, if not all, of our elementaries.
Yes.
So we're just trying to highlight this. So thank you. Yeah. Questions about the project at Jones? Thanks, Libby.
Robin.
I'm sorry.
You're welcome.
Right behind you. Ms. Burkhan, would you like to come speak about Grant Elementary? That would be, then Mrs. Woolley Jepson would be after.
Good evening, Colleen Burkhan. I have the pleasure of being the principal at Grant Elementary, and I am gonna keep it very short and sweet. It's safety. The safe and secure entrance is a beautiful building. If you haven't been there, please come by. It is impeccably maintained, but I cannot with a hundred percent certainty, a hundred percent of the time, every day I'm there, tell you who is in my building. So it's that safe and secure entrance for a variety of reasons. One of them, if you were at our building recently, we had kindergarten, first grade, second grade lunches, so parents come up, they check into Raptor, which is on the main floor, which is the second floor, and then they have to line all the way. We can't, we have nowhere for them to go. And there they wait for fifteen minutes while we're trying to maneuver other children around and respect the privacy and safety of the students we serve in our school. But it's the safe and secure entrance. That's, that's the number one priority that we're excited about at Grant. Do you have any questions?
Just a couple, I guess, clarifications too. So Grant nineteen-ten, right, so we're talking a hundred and twelve years old. And the point that goes along with that is because of decisions that were made by other governmental bodies, they made Grant, put it on the historical register, which eliminated options that we had in terms of updating the facility within new school. Therefore, we were gifted with permanently a hundred and twelve-year-old building that we can't do much with, other than put money into it and improve the experience for the students and the staff. I don't know that a lot of people understand what that decision really meant.
Yeah. And it's not that we can't, we have to get permission, you know, to change anything on the outside. And you're right, I mean, Grant needs a lot of love and care, right? And you can see it's reflected in the price tag. Just about twelve million would be invested in Grant, and a lot of that's because we have to have the separate, I can't remember if it's a cafeteria or a gymnasium, but so that addition to the south. And of course, that will match the rest of the architecture of the building, right? So we're consistent with that historical...
Right. Point being, we can't, at a hundred and twelve years old, we can't tear it down now because of the actions that were taken.
Not without permission.
Right, yeah.
And now they're trying to do it to John Marshall.
Exactly. So may that be a lesson, don't take care of your stuff.
Any other questions or anything I can help you with?
I have a general question, and it applies to, I think, all the elementary schools and the high schools, in that we have contracts right now with the community mental health people, and for, they're coming in and providing mental health services in the schools. And I know that's been a problem, space has been a problem for, for many of those situations. Is that being addressed in all of the elementary schools? Are all of the schools?
I know we are adding pupil services spaces because, one, of course, you know, we've been, we were fortunate that the community allowed us to double the size of our pupil services teams. And so I guess I will ask, you know, in the plans, would the plans around the pupil services areas allow for community-based resources to have a home? I'm wondering if anybody happens to...
I don't mind those.
Okay.
I see a lot of nodding heads from the principals.
Yes, okay, good, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that. Thank you, yeah.
It is interesting with, and I gotta make a comment because I did visit Grant, and it's a great old building.
Nice presence.
And I didn't mean the stress bowl, but the fact is, entering, I can understand how as a principal, you're not aware of a lot of people that are coming into your building. You have no clue. They go either way, gotta come up these stairwells and get up to the office area, and it's difficult. So I, I'm just, if you haven't been in some of these buildings, you almost have to get to those buildings and take a look at them so you understand what's going on here. And when you take a look at the prices, you know, that's, that's steep.
Well, I think that's what, that was sort of Pat's point, because in the past, one of the things we've heard is, you'll hear somebody might look at that and say, how much does a brand-new school cost? Because instead of putting eleven million into a hundred-year-old school, put twenty million, twenty-five million into a brand-new school, we can't. So that's why.
Yeah, yeah. And another note, you talked about, you know, going to the schools so you can kind of understand the, you know, the projects and such. I'll just, I'll just refer back to the website again. Mrs. Burkhan and the other principals all did a video, right? They kinda showed the various aspects, some of the highlights of the proposed projects too, so you can hear them speak to it, you can see in the videos too if you aren't able to go to the schools. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mrs. Woolley Jepson from Lincoln?
Ooh, Lincoln. That's what I'm most excited about. And Dr. Webster, you kind of led into the area that I am supposed to talk about. I was a tech writer in my former life, so when I'm told to keep it brief, I will keep it brief. But we are most excited with the pupil service addition and that we will have all pupil services together. Right now at Lincoln, we have pupil services scattered around the whole building. When parents come in to talk with school psychs or social workers or counselors, they have to go through the entire building, past students, and really, it's not very private. So in this case, as they're walking right into the building, pupil services will be right there and ready to greet them and help them through their processes to support families and students. How's that? Quick to the point?
Thank you, yeah.
But we get to keep Lincoln. Other area, does, I just have to point it out.
Sure, yeah.
I'm super excited about the EL title area because right now we have like six people working together in one area for English language learners, so I'm excited we'll be separating that out so the English language learners can hear the sounds. So, awesome.
Is this gonna be a new gym, this big area, or a new cafeteria?
A new gym, because right now we have gym and cafeterias the same.
Yes. It was small when it was new. I was there the first door opened, because I'm old.
Yeah, so we're separating that out, but I think someone else came to that.
Yeah.
All right.
More questions? All right. Thanks, Colleen. Let's see, next we have, oh, Marie, talking about Maine.
So, good evening. For Maine Elementary, the green addition that you see up there is for gym, and we currently have a lunchroom and gym together, which drives, unfortunately, it drives our daily schedule. And we really want learning to drive our daily schedule and, and that, and so if the, and this, I know this is true for a number of elementary schools, and some of us are looking at a new cafeteria or lunchroom, and some of us are looking at new gymnasiums. And then if you look to the right of that, there's a parking lot that would be added. We need additional parking because people do park alongside the road, and it's, it's just not safe. There's no sidewalks out there or anything, so we do need additional parking. And there is going to be a new area, our current, our current gym has a PE storage area, and that would be refurbished into a new receiving area. Right now, trucks with deliveries have to drive onto our playground and deliver at school, and this would be a separate receiving area that would be fenced off, so it wouldn't have to, they wouldn't have to come onto the playground, which would make all of the adults a lot calmer at recess time. So I'm trying to think. Yeah, I think that's, any questions?
Yeah, I think that's good. And we, I think we have six elementary schools that are getting either a gym or a cafeteria. Again, allowing learning to drive the schedule.
Right. My kids were at Riverview when the gym was added, and it made a huge difference, especially on the on-court staff, not having to try and work a jigsaw puzzle with a couple of pieces missing.
It's tough, yeah. PE misses minutes with the class right before lunch and right after lunch, and it's, yeah, it's just tight.
No questions about Maine? All right. Thank you, Marie.
Yep.
All right. Ms. Patterson and John Marshall?
Good evening. We are celebrating our ninety-ninth year at John Marshall this year, so we're one year away from one hundred, and we are very excited for... And we are very excited for the air conditioning and ventilation upgrades. I know all of you have talked about them a number of times. We are very proud of the high achievement levels that we have at John Marshall. However, we also know that we lose a lot of instructional minutes in September, May, and June due to the temperatures in our classrooms, especially on our third floor and the classrooms that have south-facing windows. In addition, in the winter, our heating and ventilation system year-round is very loud. So, a number of the classrooms in some particular areas of the building, when those systems, the heating system kicks in, that also impacts learning time. And so, I am super excited about the opportunity to gain back some instructional minutes because our students will be able to focus and our staff will have better focus and be able to keep more comfortable temps and conditions on those hot days within John Marshall. There's a lot of great things, you know, when you have a ninety-nine-year-old building that we're really excited about in addition to that. But even as I talked to staff today, almost every single person was like, we gotta get that air conditioning. So, even in the midst of December, they, they recognize that as being a really huge need, so. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you very much, Amanda. Next would be Rib Mountain. Mrs. Steckbauer was not able to be here. They are getting, they are one of the schools that's getting either a gym or a cafeteria, of course, and then the other pieces as well, the, the STEM room, the secure entrance and why not. I don't know if there's anything else we need to, were there questions about Rib? Okay, otherwise. Uh, next, Ms. Budney, we talk about Riverview. And then after that, just for staging, would be Mrs. Heilman at South.
Good evening. Well, at Riverview, there's a couple of things going on. We have a, a couple of classrooms that are going to be added, but I think what I'm most excited about is the efficiency of the cafeteria. Right now, what happens with our cafeteria is the food is brought out into the space along with all the computers, along with the scanners, along with all the wires to hook everything up. So, if you can envision, all the wires are taped down to the cafeteria floor, which students are then walking over. And so, in addition to that, we have anywhere from fifty to one hundred and fifty students in that space at a time. It can get tight, and it can get a little fast-paced, especially for our food service personnel who are traveling from the kitchen out to the center, back to the kitchen to, to get the food. So, what we're really looking with this space is to reclaim some space, put in some windows, have some natural sun, sunlight come in, looking at the efficiency of that space, and also just creating a place where our students have the time, have the space to be able to sit and enjoy their lunch so that we can accommodate all of our students and our food service. So, any questions?
Riverview is one that's at capacity, so there are some classrooms being added as well. So, we're excited about, about all of this, so.
And in addition to the, the front, there's some space added to the front. And Dr. Phil, too, had mentioned earlier about the community space, and that would be one of our buildings that would have that community space in addition to that pupil services team being in one area. As we are spread out, there's another school I mentioned as well, with our psychologists and our counselors at different spots all over the building, so.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Ms. Heilman, South Mountain.
Good evening. I'm excited to share with you a couple of updates that we are probably most looking forward to at South Mountain. An interesting piece about South Mountain is we are one of the district, or one of the schools in the district that are seeing increase in enrollment. When I began there ten years ago, we had nine sections of regular ed classrooms. We're now up to twelve. We've added the care program, which takes up a significant amount of space within our building. We fit that all in within our blueprint. But we fit everything in that we can within our blueprint. So, if anything gets added or needs to shift, we're pretty tight. Mr. Webster mentioned the use of space for our community counseling services or other outside agencies, the Bridging Brighter Smiles, even our GT services, our EL services. Most of them are finding a nook or cranny that they can. But if everybody comes to the building on one day, we don't have enough space. So, we have GT happening in the hallway. Our staff has been fantastic about shifting, but we are very, very tight right now. So, we're excited about the addition of a lunchroom and some of our other spaces, but certainly this will give us a chance to have more flexibility. Currently, our science, art, and music are sharing two spaces between the three of them, again, being very flexible. But it is hard to really be welcoming to our traveling staff when you say, oh, we hope we have a slot for you. So, that is really the big thing that I think will really help us move forward in the next five, ten, fifteen years as we see more and more families building and moving to our area.
Yeah, thank you. Questions about South Mountain?
Just more of a comment than a question, just to point out that South and Stettin were two schools that were built with these wings, designed to have additions added on, and with the thought that those are two areas that probably would grow over time. So, you'll see that with both of those schools. The wings are designed to be extended.
Yeah, and they could continue to be.
Yeah, so that green spot to the, kind of the south, you can see the tennis courts there, that will help us expand our kindergarten classrooms. But then to that, I guess you'd say, kind of the west corner there, that could keep going out and, and growing even beyond that if we needed it to.
All right, thank you very much. Mrs. Hall, there we are, in Stettin. Also growing.
Exactly. So, thank you for having me tonight. In addition to many of the things that my colleagues have mentioned, you'll see many things on the Stettin plan that overlap. Sounding a little bit, I guess, a little like a broken record to Mrs. Heilman. However, I think one thing that we're most excited about is the additional classroom space available at Stettin in this plan. For those of you who have been on the board for a number of years, we were fortunate to benefit from a two-classroom addition a number of years ago, which like was of answer to our prayers at that moment in time. But we were then able to, I say fit, but manage, right? With what we had. We had those two extra classrooms in, and it saved us from losing all of our on-course spaces. We continue to be a school, fortunately, that is experiencing increase in enrollment and are projected to continue to do so. We go between a two and a three-section school at any given moment. Right now, we sit at thirteen sections. We near or reach the board-recommended class size pretty consistently. And we're full. We're using every space and sharing some of those spaces right now. And so, really, what I'm looking forward to is to be able to say, Stettin is your neighborhood school. We're here to serve you and your neighborhood and your community. And in order for us to continue to welcome new families in, these classrooms would be necessary for us to do that. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Kelly, appreciate it. Mr. Johnson, talk about Thomas Jefferson.
Good evening, everybody. Proud to be the principal at Thomas Jefferson and excited to talk about some of the very affordable additions to Thomas Jefferson that would make us even that much better. We have had some growth as well in our area. I think it bears note that the referendum that we did receive has been in, in impact to our students. There's been no better time to increase our amount of social workers, psychologists, and counselors within our buildings, and that's had a tremendous impact on all of our elementary schools that I can speak for. For Thomas Jefferson, the STEAM spaces is something that I've had some experience with in other schools that I've had the privilege to work in. And I think it provides a really nice, you know, jobs don't have a math, and they don't have a science, and they don't, so you get this nice place where all of the curriculum intertwines and becomes like, how do we solve the world's problems? How do we work on things? How do we think and, and grow and learn and, and work on some of this stuff? That becomes a really cool place for kids to grow and learn. Like, we talk about music and, and PE, and this, these STEAM spaces also really like, when you ask your kids, what happened today? And you get that like, I don't know, you know? I've got a middle schooler, so. But I was looking for Pat, I don't work that way, but, so. But they, they come home and say, hey, look, I did this really cool thing in the STEAM lab. Like, we were making some big tower, or we were making a bridge, or we did some cool project that we had already included in it. Like, those things stick with kids and are memorable experiences. Also, our parking structure to the west side of our building, right now, we had the addition for 4K with our building, which is fantastic. The architectures of our, our building is well-maintained and really nice for students. I think that was kind of one of those things that you get to the budget at the end of it, and, you know, you just didn't quite have enough. But some of our smallest and most vulnerable children are being loaded on a pretty busy Randolph Road. When we were doing the video with Reggie and I trying to get, we were having trouble shooting the video on Randolph because there's a lot of big trucks barreling down that road and kept interrupting our voiceover that you couldn't hear us. So, it, it's a need. Our kindergarten students walk the farthest for dismissal in our building as well. So, I'd really like to have a much safer and much more proximal to where those classrooms and those new additions are, to be able to load them safely and have some additional structures to do that, so. Thank you.
Any questions about Thomas Jefferson? All right, thank you, Brent, appreciate it. All right, I think last up tonight will be Horace Mann and Montessori. And Dr. Phelps was not able to be here tonight, and so, Dr. Rousher is going to speak a little bit to, to Horace Mann. And then, Mrs. Channel had a school for Montessori. We'll talk about their proposed space. Jennifer?
Hello, everybody. No, I am not Dr. Phelps, but I am excited to talk about Horace Mann. And as many of the principals have done, I'll just highlight a few things that stand out. One is the, the secure and welcoming entrance. You've heard that repeatedly tonight. That's definitely a need at Horace Mann as well. Another interesting piece at Horace Mann that we're excited about is a remodel to the library that will actually update and improve the library space and also add for one of those flexible community rooms. So, I think it's a great example of what Leader and me would talk about, being efficient with things and effective with people. And that remodel will allow us to do both of those really well, I think. Similar concept, our fitness center will be updated at Horace Mann as well. And that's another one that serves certainly students, serves students in classes. Think about our Fayed classes, for example. Serves students in co-curriculars. And in that co-curricular piece, it has the opportunity to serve not just middle school students, but high school students, who sometimes are at Horace Mann for activities. And then, of course, to serve our staff too. Those are the quick Horace Mann highlights. Happy to answer questions if you have any.
Anything about Horace Mann? All right, thank you, Jennifer. Mrs. Channel?
All right, so now I get to talk about Montessori, which I've been waiting for. We're the best-kept secret of the district. This is our sixteenth year. I have talked before to the board about our entrance. Right now, we go in through door three, which is difficult to see. It's kind of near that green area that would be added onto the building. But we can't allow parents to come in that door because there's not a secure entrance. There's no way to check parents in. Our Raptor system is actually where the one is up there. So, as much as we try to cultivate this family feel, I have to tell parents, I'm sorry, you can't come in here. You're gonna have to drive all the way around the building, park where the flagpole is, and then come in. So, for us to have an identified entrance for our school would be wonderful. Also, branding inside of or outside of that area would be great. We do have some white letters that are up there on the building right now, but you have to be at a certain vantage point around the building to be able to see that. And then, there are still children in the Horace Mann building that say, Montessori? There's Montessori kids in here? So, it's just a way for us to be able to, to get out there and be more, more visible to our families. The restructuring of the classrooms within that space is also really important. We talked about the square footage that we needed in order for the children to be able to spread out and learn the way that we learn with our hands-on materials and that type of thing. And so, this renovation would allow us to be able to not only adequately meet the needs of our children that we have right now, but expand to that 4K and up to eighth grade that I keep telling you guys about because I'm really passionate about it, so. But those are the, the great things that we are looking for because this is just more forward progress to be able to meet the needs of the families that choose to have a Montessori education for their children.
Great choice. What's that?
A great choice.
Yeah. All right. All right, well, thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. So, you've gotten some insights into the, the projects from the people who, some of the people who know them best. So, at this point, Bob, were you gonna speak to the?
Yep, call the slides.
Yes, thank you, all right.
Thank you to all of our principals, very articulately wrapping up some of the exciting things happening in their schools in a pretty short amount of time when you consider everything that's happening. We've heard a lot tonight from the principals and also from Dr. Hiltz about need, and we also heard a little bit about affordability. And we know from previous discussions in this boardroom that a perfect referendum question marries need and affordability. And the difficulty comes in that both of those are relative terms. And need is relative to the individual and to the school district. And affordability is relative to the individual and the school district. And what we're trying to do is pare it down to just the needs. And we're also trying to use a level of affordability comparable to what has been supported for the public schools in Wausau in the past. Legislation clearly suggests that the local taxpayers should decide the level of financial support for their school district. I get the question quite often, why can't we just budget for this? Well, it's a hundred and eighty million dollars in capital improvements. The system isn't set up to just budget for serious capital improvements. We do a phenomenal job of keeping up our buildings, phenomenal job with what you see every year, about a million dollars in capital improvements, right? So, eventually, we get to the point where we need to play, we need to catch up. We need to get ahead. And the legislature's answer to that is with capital improvement referendum. So, marrying need and affordability, what you're seeing on the screen right now, and there was earlier reference to our website from two thousand twenty-one, our two thousand twenty-one referendum, is right now your best chance to see the greatest level of detail. And if the board goes in the direction of a referendum, you will see every bit as much detail, if not more, for another referendum. But if you're looking at that two thousand twenty-one referendum website, the numbers don't match what are up here right now. It got a little bit smaller. A couple of things have been mentioned already, handrails at Wausau West. We got to see them firsthand, didn't we, when we toured Wausau West? Emergency generator at the school forest, made possible through the generosity of the Wausau School Foundation. The PA and clocks at both Maine and Wausau West. We went in front of you about a year and a half ago and asked to take out a fund balance for that. So, it got a little bit smaller, but also it got a little bit bigger. Okay, some of the areas that it got a little bit bigger. When we surveyed the community, we surveyed the community and asked about a one hundred and fifty million dollar solution for K eight. We also asked about a two hundred million dollar solution for K twelve. Both received support greater than fifty percent. As you might guess, the one hundred and fifty million dollar solution received a little bit more support than the two hundred million dollar solution. So, some of the numbers also got a little bit bigger. Most notably, Jeb Steckbauer did a nice job talking about Wausau West. Wausau West was hardly in the two thousand twenty-one question. Wausau West has a pretty prominent role in what's being proposed here tonight. It went from like five million to thirty million dollars. So, we're including some more high school needs that weren't in two thousand twenty-one. And something that hasn't been mentioned too much tonight, we also were exposed to some inflation. So, inflation took its toll since the two thousand twenty-one referendum, like it or not. So, the two thousand twenty-one numbers got a little bit smaller, and they also got a little bit bigger. And here we are at one hundred eighty-one million, nine hundred thousand dollars. Dr. Hiltz mentioned earlier, we did call out the two synthetic field costs, about two million dollars each, one at East and one at West. Baseball, softball, multipurpose field at East. Baseball, softball, multipurpose field at West. And that was significantly pared down from what we started with. So, again. down from what we started with. So again, some of the numbers got a little bit smaller, some of the numbers did get a little bit bigger, and we're at 181.9. If you take forward to the next one. So how do we do this in an affordable way? This is an example of a financing plan for borrowing 181.9 million. And we borrow that amount of money through issuing bonds. And a couple assumptions that we're making here, we're issuing them in two different stages. With this kind of expenditure and planning and engineering that goes into it, you don't necessarily want to borrow it all at once. We're borrowing about 100 million at 3.5% interest and another 81.9 at about 3.75% interest. We're hopeful that we can beat those rates. And we're also making an assumption that our property value in the Wausau School District stays flat. Oftentimes, when school districts go to referendum, they make assumptions like two or three or four percent property value increases, that you're in the middle of these conversations often enough. You know what that does? It dilutes your mill rate. The costs are the same, but the mill rate goes down, mill rate goes down, mill rate goes down. So if we can optimistically say the property values will go up instead of stay at zero, and our borrowing rates can be less than 3.5 and 3.75, we're also hopeful that we can beat what's being displayed on this slide, which is a 12-cent mill rate or a $1 per month for $100,000 of property value. That just makes it easy to do the math. A $200,000, almost twice that. A $300,000, almost three times that. But it's $12 per year impact. It's much more expensive than that to borrow $181 million. You've heard from me before. The community has heard from me before. It's not that cheap, but it does end up fitting in nicely with our existing debt profile. So you'll see the far left bar graph. That's where we're at right now. Chuck Krieger earlier tonight told us about our defeasance efforts. We prepay debt. We save millions, literally millions of dollars in interest payments. But it's got our mill rate up a little bit higher than it would be if we weren't defeasing debt. We get rid of the defeasance strategy. We start filling in with brand-new debt. We wrap it around some existing debt. The blue up there is existing debt that we want to manage and we want to wrap it around. And the mill rate goes up about 12 cents and stays relatively flat after that, with some pretty conservative assumptions, I might add. Any questions on those two slides before we, I think I might have said some of what's in the next slide already.
Maybe.
To get that one. Yeah. Some of the prices have gone up, some of them have gone down. I won't go back to my seat. I'll stay up here for any questions you might have. But those are the, that's it for my prepared remarks.
Questions? Here's to Tess.
Let me wrap this up then. So again, we just want people to be mindful that if the board chooses to go to referendum in April, then if it's successful, then real work begins, right? The final designs can't be done. They're very expensive to develop and time-consuming. So if this passes in April, then begins the design process. A lot of input, again, from staff and other building users, though the final plans would be ready for bid next winter, about a year from now, break ground the spring after that. We would not do every building at one time, right? That wouldn't, that wouldn't be feasible. So, you know, it's very likely, if you look at this timeline, we're proposing that this would be about a four-year build. Some schools may not be touched at all for three years, right? So so I just kind of want to moderate people's expectations that, you know, if this thing passes in April, it'll all be done by next fall. Not going to happen. Okay? Then, so with all of the input that we've gotten, and we really value it, there's been some really honest conversation, this is the proposal that we feel meets our needs at this time. And we're certainly looking forward to any questions. And again, I want to thank the principals. You, in addition to a spreadsheet, right, you get some real personal looks at the needs and at the schools and at the staff. So I think I will stop right here, just say thank you, and see what kinds of questions people might have.
Yeah. I just want to thank everyone for taking the time out of their night to come here to, you know, talk to us about what you guys all need, you know, for your schools and stuff like that. It's all very similar to what we heard the last time we talked about a referendum. And so unfortunately, you know, that part of the referendum didn't pass the last time we went to referendum, which, you know, I thought it was, it was all very much needed, but I did vote no for it due to the ongoing pandemic. So thank you, Dr. Hiltz. You know, this was a great presentation. I liked how, you know, it was broken down per school, you know, how much it would all cost for remodels and all of that, you know, all that good stuff. The one thing that that I've heard throughout the presentations is, you know, principals are saying, you know, we need this upgrade, we need this remodel for safety concerns, for security, for improvement, for traffic flow improvement, you know, and all of that are, you know, things that I believe that, you know, our schools, our students, our parents do need within our buildings and property and, you know, all of that good stuff. The one thing that I didn't hear, though, was the turf. No one said that that was something that they needed for, you know, security reasons, improvement, any of that stuff. And that's my one concern. And Dr. Hiltz, you did touch on it in the beginning that, you know, that is a very, you know, some people have had a problem with the turf. So, you know, I'm just looking at the slide with the synthetic fields on there. And so Wausau East to Wausau West, you know, if you add those two together, you know, it's over $4 million for the turf. And no one has said that that's something that's needed. I think that the turf, it's a, it's on a, you know, a wish list, and that's something that, you know, people want, but it's not needed. And so we have to be very conscientious that that is over $4 million addition that we're asking from our constituents. I see it as a want. It's not a need. And we have to respect our constituents' wallets that, you know, they're not a fun bank that we go to whenever we want something for fun. The turf, it's cool, you know, I get it, you know, but I really don't think that we need over $4 million in turf. The one thing that I can see the $4 million go going for instead is when, when Karen asked about the fully functioning kitchen at Wausau West, and Mr. Steckbar was like, oh, well, you know, it's going to be half, you know. And I would really love to see the 4 million to go towards a fully functioning steel kitchen that students can actually go in and, you know, work in so that they can get that experience if they're planning on going into culinary education when they leave high school. So instead of putting 4 million into some turf that we really don't need, I would love to see that to go into Wausau West so we can get that fully functioning kitchen.
I think the, the food service area wasn't, it was being kept partially as residential and partially as commercial. It wasn't saying that.
At the request of the teacher.
Yeah, it wasn't saying it was half unusable. It's keeping some residential and having some commercial.
I get that. But, you know, if we're talking about our students finishing, you know, that part and going on to college for culinary management, that is what they need to experience is a fully functioning steel kitchen. It can't, it can't be residential, you know, that's not going to give them the full experience. I know, because I went to culinary school.
You know, what do you think about the educator, though, who says that they want to keep part of it as residential because their students need that residential?
And that's great. That's great. But you know what? They can go home and use their kitchen, too.
Not everybody can.
So, so that's my thing is, bottom line, the turfs are not a need. No one here said that we needed the turf.
What do you feel about the fine arts, the things for fine arts that aren't necessarily needs? Do you support those?
Those are needs. I know, because I was in theater. I know that we need the wings. We need the storage. You need that to be a fully functioning theater production.
Those are things that will benefit the fine arts program as the turf would benefit athletics and physical education.
Is not. You have the grass up, you have the fields outside. Why do you need the turf?
The hundreds of students that get scholarships for sports.
Of additional money that we're asking our constituents.
Could I ask, I wonder if either Mr. Miller or Mr. Vanahill, would either of you want to speak to the, you've shared with us your interest in turf, and it's not just you, right? We heard some, some parents tonight and at some of the listening sessions. Would either of you be willing to kind of speak to, you know, the need for the turf that we're proposing?
Do you want us to come up there?
Sure, if you wouldn't mind. We just, the, 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 the audience hears better if you speak in the microphone.
Just for context, before you gentlemen begin, just for context, the turf volume, right, the amount of money represents of the $12 a year that Bob mentioned on a $100,000 home, turf would be 26 cents per year. Rough math, maybe 25.8. Just for perspective, it's 26 cents a year per $100,000.
Excuse me, gentlemen, before you begin. I also want to point out to the board, too, that this $2 million per school, Wausau East and Wausau West, for turf, it costs more than the renovations for Hewitt, Texas, G D Jones, and almost as much as the renovations at Thomas Jefferson. So at three schools, this turf costs more than the renovations on these three schools.
Thank you.
Well, to Ms. Lowell's point, and I appreciate her bringing up, and I'm an athletic director, so everyone would assume that, that I'm for athletic facilities. And I am to a degree, but I, I'm also an activities director. And to her point, the additions and upgrades to the auditorium are long overdue at West. I can speak to that. We, we compete with other schools. And we compete with other schools around the state and in our, and in our conference. Our facilities lag behind the other schools. We understand that co-curriculars is a very important part of the high school experience. And whether you're in a performing arts element, whether that's drama or band, choir, that's part of your experience. And so we, we look to upgrade those facilities for those kids. Just to put this in a little bit of perspective, our outdoor facilities are woefully behind the rest of the schools in the state, particularly in four divided districts that I surveyed. There's an element of multi-use that we're unable to manage. The condition of our fields is always a battle. We have soccer, we have lacrosse, we have football, and we have them at two to three levels for each sport. That's a lot of activity on those fields. Part of the experience, I think, is to give our kids the best facilities that we can. Not necessarily the, the ultimate, but we certainly should be able to provide facilities that are equal with what our kids compete at. Right now, we're limited to some things. If I was to, if our kids were to play in a sexual level event, I can't host them. I don't have a turf field to do that. So those, those games would be pushed, pushed somewhere else. And I think we have an obligation to make those experiences available to all of our kids, whether they're athletes, whether they're musicians, or they're thespians. I have all kinds of other data about why co-curriculars is good, but that's just enough of our children's.
And I think on top, from that perspective, when we talk about putting $800,000 worth of lighting onto facilities, what the whole purpose of that is to increase opportunities for kids to play and for revenue to be brought back into the community with all hosting these events. However, as we know, on those types of facilities with the grass, that there's only so much wear and tear that those fields can take before they're no longer usable or feasible for anybody to use. Whereas on top of it, if you put in any synthetic type turf, now you're opening it up to all various opportunities. So that facility can be used all day through the FIAE classes, and then not to mention all weekend with youth, youth programs. And then now you add the, the lighting on top of that, now you're using that facility consistently. And that, it goes from involving community to revenue coming back into the district because of the tournaments that are hosted there, because of the opportunities that people can use that facility. Whereas if we're investing a lot of money into grass, that is just getting beat down constantly, especially at the nighttime when it's wet, it's, it doesn't hold up. And we're, we're, we're dealing with that issue at Tom Field when it comes to, we want all our football players to have opportunities to play there. However, they're not allowing JV and those younger levels because of the facility of the grass that we're trying to maintain it. And if we used all of those teams, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't hold up.
Would be a mud hole.
It would be a mud hole. And the same thing, if you put lights, everybody's going to want to use that opportunity to be under the lights. And therefore, now if we have soccer on there and we have football, we have all our lower levels that want to have that experience as well, which is going to increase, I feel, that whole collaboration and that unity of community is when young kids get that opportunity to play on a great facility, that's what's keeping them out for sports. Rather than, you know, only our varsity is allowed to play under the lights, our younger levels have to play during the daytime on the practice field because we got to make sure that our fields are suitable for varsity.
My concern with this is how do we keep them safe? I know DC Everest has turf for their football field, but that's fenced off. These fields are open. I mean, are, do we have to worry about vandals?
All the facilities on our end at East is all fenced in.
If I could just, there's an issue that sometimes surfaces about funding for turf facilities at high school because many communities do it privately. The communities that have the most difficulty, these are big colleagues of mine who've gone through this, would be multi-high school districts. Wausau is a prime example. My friends down in Appleton or in Oshkosh or in Eau Claire, who have tried to upgrade facilities, find it very difficult to do through, through private funding because the community is divided between multi-high schools. So I appreciate this discussion being done at, at the board level regarding a referendum.
Yep. Thank you. I appreciate you sharing your view, by the way. And I think, I think you represent a view that, that many have. So I appreciate, you know, this opportunity to, to.
I have one more. So I've heard a lot about, you know, oh, if we get this turf, there's going to be all this revenue brought into our community and stuff like that. And I've asked about what does that revenue look like? Are there numbers that we can compare from like Wisconsin Rapids, you know, these school districts that do have turf? What does the revenue look like? And that revenue hasn't been presented. So I don't even know what that revenue looks like. I keep hearing revenue, revenue, revenue in the community, revenue, and I'm not seeing numbers. So that is where my, my frustration comes from, is I'm hearing revenue, revenue, revenue. But when I ask for numbers, those numbers aren't being presented. So what are the numbers? We don't know. All I hear is we're going to make money, we're going to bring in money, but I'm not seeing the numbers.
I don't recall you ever asking specifically for revenue.
I did. I did. It was a few months ago.
Who was charged with following up on that? Do you remember?
Someone was.
I think that was regarding the dome. But can, can I say something about the, the fine arts? the fine arts, because I just want to make sure that my position is clear, because I support the changes at West. But the reason I brought it up is I've been to a lot of performances at West in, in the auditorium, and they've been amazing. So they're getting it done. So they still, they still do it. They do whatever they need to do, they get it done. So what we're talking about is improving the experience of this activity. And that's why I compared it to the same thing when we're talking about athletics. And it seems like sometimes, there's almost this competition between fine arts funding and athletics funding, and I don't get it, because I support them both, I think both of them are great for students, and I think the studies show that students that take part in either one, or both, some of them do both, do better, I think they're both great. And I don't know why something that improves fine arts is seen as a need, and something that improves athletics is seen as just, just sort of a luxury. And I'm sure we can think of luxuries for both examples, but, um, I just want to make sure it's clear that I, I support those fine arts changes at West, just like I support the improvements for athletic facilities. I think they both benefit our students greatly.
Well, I just want to make it clear, I did not bring up the fine arts. I was just talking about the turf. Lance, you brought up the fine arts.
Right, I, I brought it up-
And you put them together.
Right.
So I am not putting fine arts against turf, okay?
Right, and I brought it up to-
I did not do that.
I brought up to explore your opinion. I'm wondering why you would think that something that improves the experience for our students who take part in athletics is just a want, whereas something that improves our experience for our fine art students is a need. I, I think they both improve the experience for our students.
You know what, Lance? I heard storage, I heard the experience, and I heard that, you know, it's going to be better for the theater students, that they have the storage, they have the, um, the experience, that they have full changing rooms, so they can change. Changing clothing, makeup, you know, whatever that is. You know, but I don't know why everything has to be a pit between fine arts and sports, because it's not that.
Right, it shouldn't be.
What I'm saying is, the turf is a need, I mean, it's a want, it's not a need. It's an extra over four million dollars, and so I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of, we're bringing in revenue for turf, we're bringing in revenue, revenue, revenue. I'm not seeing any numbers. Um, it's an extra four million dollars. If we take the turf out, it's going to bring this, um, this down to a hundred seventy-seven million in sum, so the under a hundred eighty million. And again, I don't see the, the, the reasoning for four million dollars, over four million dollars in turf, when Hewitt, Texas remodels, G D Jones remodels are under two million, Thomas Jefferson's remodels are a little bit over two million, and now we want to put in these, this fake grass for over four million dollars? I don't understand that, it doesn't make sense to me.
I have a question. It seems to me that, that what I heard you say was that if we put in the turf, we're going to increase the number of options for students, whether it be a FIAD class or whatever, that we can't do that now because we're using grass.
Because of wear and tear.
And so I'm, what I'm assuming is, the expense of maintaining a grass field is going to be considerably more than once the turf is in, in the long, ongoing maintenance. Is that a true statement?
So i- if you look at it as a per hour of use, um, if you compare grass to athletic turf, they would cost the same to maintain. The difference or the advantage of turf is, you're going to get infinitely more hours of available use out of turf than you will grass. We can be out on that turf, you know, if we have a warm March, mid-March, we can be out there on that turf. We can't do that with grass. We'll, we'll rototill it, we'll turn it into mud, we have to wait for the frost to come out of the ground, we have to wait for it to firm up. With turf, we can use it infinitely more hours than we can grass. So on a per hour of use basis, the turf is going to be less expensive, the artificial turf, I'm sorry.
And Larry, just to put a point on that, too, and, and I looked at these numbers over the last week, and I did find one study, how field turf provides the best value. I know that there's some discrepancies over maintenance and all that stuff. According to this, based on an eighty thousand square foot field with average cost and average usage rates across North America, maintenance is twenty-five percent on turf versus what it is of natural grass over ten years. Your usage hours can increase, will increase two and a half times, which, which is what you were just saying, which makes your average cost per hour go down by two-thirds.
Correct.
So those are the numbers for people that have done this before, and I'm, I'm sure that the, the geographic region has to do with the amount of maintenance that is saved or not. Our climate, I'm sure, you know, up here is a lot more maintenance on it than it does a nice sunny field out in Florida. But this is, you know, this isn't made up, I mean, this is readily available.
Well, and I think with the, with the turf, because I'm one of those ones, I'm on the fence always, um, our marching bands, so there is some crossover. Our marching bands could actually practice on the field.
FIAD, you know, people just think sports, but it's, it's, it's not just that. It's FIAD as well, it's curriculum, it's band, it's, people can use it, as opposed to right now, where you basically have to, nobody can use it because it's going to wear out before the year's end.
It's kind of sacred ground where you can't, yeah.
And how many times are there baseball and softball teams practicing in the spring, sharing the gymnasium at West, because they can't get out on their fields? All the time.
Having been with a field, synthetic turf, you could start sports programs much earlier. Yeah, it's a given, it's a given. You don't even have to wait, you can get the snow off and you can start going with it. So you can start doing that. But I wanted to point out something other than just the amount of time, the activities, and all of those types of things, but I look at it from a safety and security situation, safety specifically. Now, we're talking about the theater, we're talking about calipers on the side, on the side, so that you can get people up onto the, uh, stage safely. You've got lighting, you've got camp walks, you've got light boxes, students can work in those safely, because they're not up on ladders. Those are great additions in the fine arts. In athletics, taking a look at the field, the field is going to prevent injuries in many ways, because you're talking about a field that starts being used too much, now you've got ruts, you've got holes. You start talking about that on a field that's not synthetic turf, bottom line is you can blow a knee out, now you've got knee injuries, you've got ankle injuries, whereas on the synthetic turf, that's maintained on a flat surface. So I'm looking at the safety and the health of our students, that we can put them in a better position by having synthetic turf, so that they are not going to get hurt. It's bad enough, I mean, I just had a grandson that blew on an ACL on a regular turf field because of the fact there was a hole. And I use that specifically about the fact that we need to be concerned about our students in the fine arts, athletics, academics, like you've heard me say many times, the triple A student, the academics, arts, and athletics. We can't forget any one of those As. So I'm, I'm concerned more about safety, and that's going to help us prevent injuries, hopefully. Now, I don't have all the statistics on that, but I'm just saying from a subjective point of view.
All right.
Well, students who sign up for sports, you know, they take the risk that they're going to get injured. I mean, you're, you're walking, you're running, you're kicking, you're throwing, you're going to be at risk for injury anyways. So doing sports, you're always going to be at risk of that, whether you're on grass, whether you're on cement, whether you're on turf, you know, athletes take that risk to do what they enjoy, so they know that.
I'm, I'm sure you're not suggesting that we wouldn't want to minimize that risk, though, correct?
I'm saying that injuries happen when people do sports. That's all I'm saying.
All right, I think we've beat the field turf discussion to death. Last point?
I'm sorry, just one more, yes. Um, I, I do not, I'm not going to vote for this referendum if the turf stays in there. Everything else, we need it, we need it. I understand why we need it. But this four, over four million dollars for this fake grass, I'm not going to vote for a referendum that has this over four million dollars up there. And I think a lot of my constituents, um, which are your constituents as well, they're not going to vote for that either, because property taxes did go up. Property taxes did go up.
So you think the feasibility of passing the referendum increases exponentially by twenty-six cents per hundred thousand dollars worth of home savings?
Well, if you think about inflation as well, and then you add twelve dollars on top of that-
No, that, okay, any other? All right. What else?
Well, um, that's all we've got, uh, for, for the referendum proposal tonight. If the, the board is, uh, um, prepared, um, we would be looking for a motion to create an initial resolution. And I would, just kind of, we can talk process, but I, I'm sorry, Bob, I didn't ask you to prepare to speak this, can you kind of talk about what has, what's our deadline? Thank you, gentlemen. What is our, what's the board's deadline to approve an April referendum, and what has to happen prior to that deadline?
Sure, we need two resolutions from the board. One is called an, an initial resolution, uh, suggests, beyond suggest, it determines the bond amount that we would be set to borrow, and we need a, a referendum resolution, saying we're going to go to referendum to ask that question. So we need two resolutions. In recent memory, you've probably seen a few of those, right? So we would see both of those resolutions, at least in their outline format, next week, December twentieth, and then we would take full board action. I believe the board meeting is January tenth.
Mm-hmm.
Would take, uh, action on it. And the drop dead deadline would be right around January twentieth, but, uh, not until after a board, it was, it would be too late to take it to the operations committee meeting in January.
So if we have a motion today, it's to agree to continue to move forward, and we can still put more thought into what we're looking at as we continue to go on.
What you take action on today, I will bring a week from tonight, from our bond council. And our bond council would write the referendum question for us, uh, put the dollar amount into it, the financing plan doesn't happen until after a referendum successful, so that doesn't happen yet, uh, but that's what I would bring a week from tonight. So the question would be determined, uh, a week from tonight preliminarily.
Well, I think, I think what Jim's question sort of gets there, gets to is, what we would be voting on would be the dollar amount, and the, and this is the plan for what to do with that dollar amount. It doesn't mean that every single item is going to cost exactly, exactly that amount. I mean, it, it's even possible you could get to a point at the end where you don't, you can't do everything. So, so this is the plan for the money, it doesn't mean that every single item in here is going to be accomplished, because sometimes school districts go to referendum and they pass it, and maybe they weren't conservative enough with their, with their estimates, or maybe prices change, and they, some of the things might not happen. So the, the, unless it's, unless it's building a new building or something, I think that you have to commit to, but, so we would be voting on the dollar amount, and obviously this is the plan for it, but that doesn't mean that every single item in here is what eventually is going to happen over the course of three or four years of, of building.
And I don't know if the board is interested. We do have three of our colleagues from Nexus here tonight. This is what they do, right? You know, they, they helped us develop, uh, the plan and the costing, and they've done, they've, you know, managed a number of these. Um, we've got Brent Jones, are you still back? There he is. And Mike David and Steve Shonert, you've seen, I think, all three of them before. I don't know, Jim, would you add anything to this conversation, based on what Mr. Trollope is saying?
Do you want to come up, or?
Um, sure, if you, uh, if you'd like to share, sure, yeah, please do.
Sure.
Mr. Trump, his, his summary is, is, is pretty close.
That's good enough.
Turn the turn.
This is good so far.
The, um, the, the documents that would be, the resolutions that would be produced by bond council do provide some specificity, but it's, it's still fairly vague. And as we talked about in the timeline, there's a very detailed design process, and where there's lots of staff input, so things can flex a little bit. And then you also have, um, the impacts of the, the bid climate. We do have inflation figured in, but we're obviously in some, some crazy times right now, but we, we have tried to factor that in. And so the, um, most likely, the, the final scope, you, you would be able to accomplish most, if not all, of these things. The, the goal is that maybe you have a little extra to do some more, okay? But everything is, plans and specs are, are developed after, after the referendum is approved, then we go through a competitive bid process and bring those bids back to the board for approval, and hopefully be able to accomplish all the work that's laid out here, plus a little more, hopefully, but you're right, is, um, subject to, um, the, the bid climate, there's chances some things could get blown.
So passing this tonight, whatever the potential action is that's requested, if it were, it's at the hundred and eighty-one million. If, for whatever reason, there was discussion or decision made in the next week, and it went to one hundred and seventy-seven million, or it went to one hundred and ninety-five million, or a hundred and twenty, we can still adjust that number.
Yes. The, the documents that we develop between now and a week from tonight, relatively speaking, are, are very inexpensive to develop, right? We're going to work with bond council, not a lot of documents you'll see a week from tonight. The documents, you may recall from last year, that you're going to see on the January tenth meeting, are pretty extensive, and they're a little bit more expensive to develop. So changes that we make between now and next week, easy to make, so to speak, after next week, they get a little bit more expensive, because we have to give specific direction to bond council to create a pretty large packet in the board book for. Now fortunately, we have time to work on that, we have Christmas break, and we have some other time, it's not a one-week turnaround, uh, so the documents we create for next week.
Well, and, yeah, and the reason I'm asking is that I'm guessing, like, we all have probably been getting input from the community on pros and cons of this, and I would hope, I would think that we're going to get more input based on the discussion tonight, and, you know, and each individual board member can, I don't want to say come back with their puts and takes on the ledger, but at least share your feedback with, with Dr. Hiltz this week, based on things that you're hearing, and if there's material changes, we still have a chance to do that.
I think it's fair to say, Bob, that, um, action from the board tonight would be, provide direction, but not final decision.
Correct. Directions for a week from today. Then that, next week, would provide direction for January tenth. Uh, and then I start working with bond council, and that's my last opportunity to talk to you, right? December twentieth. So December twentieth, we want definitive direction, so we develop the right documents for the January tenth meeting.
Okay.
So the summary is, basically, we need to step through this, and we got to go through a process, and so that's why it's not going to be a decision tonight. We need to continue to go forward if we're going to take a look at, since our community has said, no building closed, we've got to take care of every building, and this is the money inside.
I, I guess, I've been trying to get this point, then, and, um, I guess I didn't hear that the community was not willing to consider that, and being good proponents and good stewards of taxpayer money, you know, Lance demonstrated in one of the listening sessions, you know, talking about consolidation, what that could mean for our district, and being good stewards of taxpayer money, and the benefits in some consolidation, uh, you know, increasing sections of grades in, in each class, allowing us to maintain class sizes, benefit to the teaching staff, and a benefit to the parents who are concerned about class sizes. Um, you know, Jane even mentioned that, I think in that very same listening session, of being open to, to that discussion. Um, I guess one thing that I'm curious about, you know, we had John Uding provide a demographic study in October, which has shown since, um, the mid-two thousands or two thousand and two, a declining enrollment. And obviously, we all know there's a lot of growth out west, Deb talked about what's happening out in South Mountain, in my neck of the woods, in Satine, and, um, I imagine it's a matter of time before those, all those farm fields out there become subdivisions out in that area, but understanding the demographic growth, um, and what the future of the district really looks like, and so I hope that that's part of these discussions, because I, in my opinion, I think a lot of people are going to see a hundred and eighty million dollar price tag, and not see consolidation, uh, and, and true talk around that, and, and be concerned. Lacrosse is going through a very similar, uh, situation with their district right now. We had athletic directors here months ago, talking about some of the athletic disparities, uh, with- between our two high schools. We've heard about some of the academic, you know, inequities at both of the high schools. So I guess I'm a bit confused how we went from talking about some of that stuff, which really, you know, that proverbial can has been kicked down the road for quite some time, and to just throw it all in, it just, it seems a bit distant, you know, that we're not taking into that consideration, that five to 10-year look. So I guess I would ask, you know, is there any more information from a demographic study perspective of looking five years out? Obviously, East, I think, was designed for about 1,700 students. It's now down to, I think it was 800, 900 students or around 1,000 students. You know, so if we look five, 10 years out, do we continue to see that decline? And what does that mean for that particular school? I just think looking for the future vision and creating a district and a space that these students are going to succeed in is something that we need to be very conscious of.
I think most of, you know, the vast majority of what's in here is stuff that is needed in less time than 10 years, though. Secure entrances.
Yes.
Roofing.
And I agree. I think the need is, obviously, I have been through the schools, I see, it's a need, but I think, you know, the public obviously is going to be very concerned about, you know, how the dollars, you know, are spent and making sure, you know, they see that we have 13 elementary schools and most school districts are size, I think, right-sized are, you know, six to seven, you know, elementary schools, or somewhere in that ballpark. So I didn't, I guess in some of the community listening sessions, I heard constituents saying that they're open to it. I want to make sure that it's, you know, fair and not, you know, turning one elementary school into some mega elementary school. And I think, you know, where you started to go down that path and presenting some options, Dr. Hiltz, it kind of demonstrated that, you know, we could do that properly, but...
I would be concerned with the delay. Like, I've said a means before, if I could just, if it was just all up to me, which is a good thing, everything isn't all up to me, but if it was, I would rather have us go from 13 elementary schools down to nine or 10 of about 350 students. If that's all we were discussing, I would be in support of it, but we have all these other needs that are really important, whether it's the secure entrances, it's air conditioning, it's roofing, it's paving. And I'm concerned that if we wait to talk about consolidation, which means we're not doing anything in April, we're at the earliest for November, and then we fail in November because closing four schools creates four no-vote committees, and now we're off again. I have the same concern about turf, frankly. If we go to referendum and people vote no because they don't like turf and they want that turf to come out so that we then go to referendum a year later without the turf to save $4 million, it's going to cost way more than $4 million. If we delay a year, it costs more than that. We can see that, just the difference between last year and this year, that some of these costs.
It was $7 million for inflation, if I remember right.
Yeah. And so I totally share your concern, but my worry is that we actually would be costing the taxpayers more money if we delay, if we delay this. That would be my worry.
So John, for clarification's sake, you would be open to merging and closing schools?
I'd be open to looking at that consolidation so that, you know, we can create schools and spaces that, you know, provide those sections, that we can, you know, create class sizes that are more accommodating to teaching staff and being good stewards of taxpayer money for facilities that, you know, instead of, especially with our large footprint, if we were to do some consolidation, you know, we have, we'd be able to utilize our funds in less facilities instead of spreading that very thin and, you know, trying to do $180 million worth of upgrades. I think that price tag could be concerning to a lot of constituents.
You know, I agree with you too, that I think merging and closing schools is going to save money. I agree with that too. But the thing is, our constituents have told us that that's not how they want to use their money. They want to keep their neighborhood schools, that's how they want to use their money. And so they don't like that. They want to keep their schools. So I am not, I, you know, because of what constituents are saying, that they want to keep their neighborhood schools, that's how they want to use their money, I would not be for closing or consolidating schools.
And I think a price tag of $180 million will test that theory. You know, that's a...if this is what it's going to take to maintain that, I guess we'll see if the public will support that.
And what you mean, John, what you're talking about is, you know, looking forward to your point, 10 years.
Yeah.
What would be the optimum strategic view of the district, right? What would be the most efficient, effective model that we can come up with?
What do we want our secondary education to come into so that they have the best opportunities for success, whether they're going to move on to college, or take on a trade, or whatever it is that they're going to do, you know? And looking at demographics and shifts, it's an important aspect of this. You know, we talked about the athletics and the eight-man football team and some of the other disparities on athletics and some of the disparities in academics, academic opportunities. And it just seems like we're staring that in the face and saying, yeah, we know, we know there needs to be probably some change there for the better of the district, but we'll just keep going down and doing the same thing that we've been doing. And to me...
You have to be able to sell that to the community, that those...
Well, I think the community...
The river, the neighborhood schools, the two high schools, those are so ingrained in people in this city. They love them dearly, and until they come to us and say we're ready to do something different...
There's really two different issues there, though, because from the elementary side, you would need referendum if you're talking about closing schools and adding on to other schools to accommodate the students from the schools that you closed. But the second, the high school, that conversation isn't really tied so much to a referendum unless you're looking to build one, unless you're looking to put them all in one building, then that would require a referendum. So the high school talk of consolidation of maybe 9, 10, 11, 12, some of the things we've talked about at past meetings, that wouldn't be tied to a referendum, though. Because if that doesn't require referendum construction spending.
Yeah, but as much as I like that idea, I'm not doing it until the community tells me that's what they want. Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
Not for me, just looking for direction.
All right, well, the potential, or potential, the possible action requested, and I'm going to put this out there, I'm seeking a motion that we direct administration to draft an initial resolution for a referendum in April of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And just to clarify, we do have flexibility. This is providing direction, this is narrowing in what we're asking or what we're thinking is the best vision for the district right now.
When you bring that, well, assuming this passes, when you bring that back to us, can you address Kyle's question about the, I know Pat tried to just, because I was sketching it, but tell us what the difference would be in the total amount and what the difference would be on the tax impact of that next week or whatever it is when we address that?
Sure.
You don't think mine was close enough?
No.
I'm just going to check, I'm going to end up at the same.
Yeah, just because if we're going to, if we're going to talk about, if we're going to get down to the dollars and cents at the next meeting and talk about maybe pulling that out, I'd like to know, you know, what the impact is.
I'll probably show that with a column next to it.
Today, we're taking step one. Today, we're taking step one. Okay.
And I'll develop an example, right, that you may modify during the meeting, that that example is going to be $181,900,000, and it's going to be the next slide's finance plan, whatever that next slide is. I will say this about the next slide, that financing plan, unless you deviate considerably from that financing plan, is going to show a 12-cent impact.
Could we also see revenue that might come from putting turf down?
Sure, I can talk about that right now, as a matter of fact, because I did a little research when that discussion happened at the board meeting, even though I didn't know I was given direction, I looked that up. The school district revenue will be minimal. It will be minimal. The big impact is the community revenue, and that is very, very, very difficult to measure. If you host a soccer tournament and you have 200 fans coming to the soccer tournament, how many families, and they all spend money at the gas station, they all go to eat at a restaurant, some of them stay in a hotel, that's probably the big impact to the community. I've reached out to other school districts that have had just field turf fields, not stadiums, not indoor practice facilities. Those are the things that generate revenue. Rhinelander generates some revenue with the big dome, it's the biggest one in North America, I believe. Man, it's beautiful.
That's where the conversation came in and talking about, you know, potential revenue. An indoor facility allows not only our use of it from not just athletics, but in a lot of other areas, but the ability to rent out that space. You know, my kids utilize space all around this community, indoor spaces for soccer, you know, softball, baseball, football, I mean soccer, all of it. You know, it's, that's the opportunity. So creating spaces that allow you the ability to create revenue, not just a, you know, a football stadium, a football track, you know, things that allow you to draw competition in, you know, dig pie in the sky stuff, an ice arena that, you know, we control and maybe has certain things tied into it that allow us to generate revenue. That's the talk about revenue. Yeah, putting a turf field out in the middle of West isn't going to generate any revenue for us. The talk was more along the lines of the indoor facility and being able to rent that facility out and hopefully further expanding club sports. There's a lot of sports out there that, you know, a lot of kids are getting into. Obviously, lacrosse is a growing sport. You're seeing other club sports gain popularity at the collegiate level, curling, you know, ultimate frisbee, one that I happen to like, cornhole is a pretty popular game these days. So being able to offer expanded club sport opportunities to kids that maybe don't want to do football or soccer, you know, and just kind of broadening that experience.
And that, just to be clear, because some people don't know what it means, that's not part of this presentation?
No.
Because I know there was some confusion about that, about whether or not, when we talk about turf, are we talking about the dome and all that? That discussion is mostly centered around private fundraising, but this wouldn't address that.
Yes, and that's when I started looking around and trying to find out what kind of revenue could be generated. And the owner of the facility, you're correct, John, the owner of the facility will generate some revenue if it's a stadium, if it's an indoor practice facility, or an ice rink or something like that. But the impact of the community is almost limited by your imagination, what you can throw into that analysis. What about attracting students? You can talk about fine arts, athletic, academic programming that attracts students. And when you round it off CTE, you round it off to $10,000 a student, you know, you can generate some pretty big dollar amounts, and then if you talk about over 20 years, you can make them even larger. And if you get the Chamber of Commerce included and you talk about hotel revenue and gas stations and restaurants and all the other things that go into what people do when they come to town, you can, you can get that number to be pretty big. So oftentimes, it's even, it's sometimes more accurate and easier to talk in anecdotal terms. Unless you really want to see some eye-popping numbers, the chamber can probably help us and come up with some pretty big ones.
So the value, I mean, I recall seeing something from the chamber, don't quote me on the number, but there's a girls' softball tournament in the spring out in Sunnyvale. I recall seeing that that generates over $2 million in the local community, you know, for...so you're going to have those examples all over the place. Is it of direct value or revenue to the district? No, but it is improving the community as a whole.
Yes, and that's what makes it tough to present those numbers, right?
Small business owners, all kinds of stuff.
Sure does bring in our whole mission about bringing the community together and moving forward.
All right, so we have a first and a second. If no other questions or comments, I would like to ask for a vote on this, and I would ask that be real call, please.
John Krieger?
Yes.
Kyle Low?
Hello.
Cody Nicolai?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Karen Vannenberg?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Pat passed.
Do you have your direction?
I have direction. I'm a blinker.
Thank you, everybody. Obviously, long, but very robust and informative discussion. This is one of the largest initiatives for the community and for the district, I think, in a long time, so...
This will have a big impact.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, item 11, board member professional growth and development. Anyone have any items to share for this month? Everyone will be tired, even if they did, they would say them right now, so, okay. Moving on, legislative liaison, Ms. Low, any burning legislative updates?
So there are a few bills going through the Senate, State Senate right now. Six bills called, they're altogether, they're called safe storage or gun safety legislation. So one of the bills would require businesses that sell firearms to secure all firearms when the business is unattended. Another bill is to require a gun owner to store firearms in a locked container or having a locked device engaged if a child is living in the residence or present at, in the home. The other bill is would require that the seller provide the individual receiving the gun with a secure, lockable container or trigger lock for the firearm at the time of sale or transfer of a gun. The fourth bill would require reporting or loss of stolen firearms within 24 hours of discovering they are lost or stolen. This legislation enables law enforcement to trace guns more effectively and makes for the successful prosecution of users of stolen guns more likely. The fifth bill is it would make it a Class A misdemeanor if an individual leaves a firearm in their, in their unattended and unlocked vehicle and the firearm is subsequently stolen. And the last bill would require a gun owner to store firearms in a locked container or with a locking device engaged, except when carrying the firearm or if a person who cannot legally possess a firearm lives in the residence. So these are six bills that have been introduced in the state legislature in the Senate, and I personally, myself, think that they're very good bills because of what we have had to go through within the past few months. And that's all I'll say about that. So there is a new program providing fresh produce to Wisconsin students, which has a record number of recipients. The DPI released this, and so it's called the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program, funded by the U.S. Department of Agriculture and administered by the DPI, where it provides students in eligible public and private schools a variety of free fresh fruits and vegetables during the school day through reimbursement to the schools. And it is currently serving 85,500 elementary students in 239 Wisconsin schools last year. So it's at its highest participation rate. Governor Evers announced a $150,000 grant program for a computer science education pilot program. And so this is in conjunction with WEDC, the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. So it's a pilot program that aims to train teachers and bring computer science into all Wisconsin K through 12 classrooms, and it's getting a boost grant of $150,000 from WEDC. At the beginning of December, Governor Tony Evers did announce a $110 million investment in Wisconsin, in Wisconsin schools. And so it has been reported in the media that the Wausau School District is getting a little bit over $1 million of that 110 million. So he did campaign on that, and so he's delivering on his promise. And then last but not least, the Department of Health Services does recommend that everyone 16 and older get a vaccine booster dose. And so, you know, if you've gotten your two doses, the DHS does recommend that everyone 16 or older get their booster. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Dr. Hiltz, any additional... Dr. Hiltz, any additional comments?
I would just add, there's one more bill, there's a financial transparency. We were talking to Mary Felskauski recently and they're going to, I think Governor Evers supports it, and they're going to be looking for a team to help create a template, a team of school folks to create a template that would help constituents understand school finance, kind of where the dollars are going, in more understandable terms than we are often using. So I'm going to look for a way to get Mr. Cass on that team if he's interested.
I'll second that.
I guess, he has a spreadsheet already.
He's ready to go. He has the template done, so anyway. Other than that, nothing else to ask, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd like to ask that the Board Member Liaison Activity Report be entered into the record and I will seek a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.